Is everybody ready? Kurt, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. We're ready, Vice Mayor.
Okay. All right. Morning or good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and bring the June 6, 2023 Lawrence City Commission meeting to order. And to start us off, I'd like to go ahead and have Sherri give us a rundown of two aspects.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and good evening, everyone. If you are attending this meeting via Zoom, please ensure you are muted and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat, and all chats go directly to the meeting host. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, those attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. When the Vice Mayor, excuse me. Those participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. Participants will be called upon in the order they appear on the meeting host's screen. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. I will also add that the podium does raise and lower, so to ensure that you're seen on Zoom and that you're heard, you can use that function. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate it. And okay, to go ahead and get us started off, I'll start with item A, approving the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. And I would entertain a motion on that.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Proclaim. Aye and none. So, all right, agenda approved. All right, item B, recognition and proclamation presentation. I believe the first one is proclaim June 19, 2023 as Lawrence Juneteenth celebration. Sherri, is there, would there be somebody in the room to speak to that proclamation?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Marcus Logan, and on behalf of the Lawrence, Kansas Juneteenth Organization, I stand before you today to express our deepest gratitude to the esteemed mayor and city commissioners for their invaluable support and participation in our Juneteenth proclamation. Today, as we gather to commemorate the emancipation of enslaved African Americans and celebrate the richness of our diverse community, we are honored to have the mayor and city commissioners join us in this significant moment. Your presence and active involvement in recognizing and proclaiming the importance of Juneteenth amplifies the significance of this historic event. By reading the Juneteenth proclamation, the mayor and city commissioners demonstrate their commitment to fostering unity, equality, and justice in our city. Their dedication to acknowledging the struggles, triumphs, and contributions of African Americans throughout our history serves as a beacon of hope and progress for our entire community. We do extend our heartfelt appreciation to the mayor and city commissioners for their unwavering support and for taking the time to understand the significance of Juneteenth. Your participation in this event sends a powerful message of inclusivity and solidarity, and we are truly grateful for your leadership and partnership. Finally, thank you for your unwavering dedication and commitment to our community's progress. I yield, I think I have three minutes, I would like to take a little bit of my time to ask publicly to have Bart Littlejohn read our proclamation from the stage at noon on Saturday, June 17, to open our Juneteenth celebration in South Park.
Thank you, Marcus. I'd be glad to. Let me look at my schedule, but I'm pretty sure that I'm going to be in the parade, so I think that'll work out.
And as a fellow Leadership Lawrence 2019 alum like myself, I just appreciate all you're doing for the community, and thank you for your time today, people.
I appreciate that, Marcus. Thank you very much.
Who's going to read it?
It was a... Oh, okay.
Bart's going to read it. Bart's going to read it.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration of the ending of slavery, slavery dating back to June 19, 1865, the day on which Union soldiers landed at Galveston, Texas, with news that the war had ended and that all slaves were now free, even though President Lincoln had signed the Emancipation Proclamation two and a half years earlier. And whereas Juneteenth has become a tradition of celebrations that began following the reading of the proclamation by General Gordon Granger in 1865 that has lasted over 150 years and is today hosted in cities all across America, featuring rich traditions, including celebrations in the form of festivals, parades, and oral histories, also known as Freedom Day, and has continued to be a highly revered event across the country as a time for honoring one another and the memory of all those who endured slavery, especially those who moved from slavery to freedom. And whereas Juneteenth allows people of all races, nationalities, and religions in cities across the country to join hands, to acknowledge a period in our history that shaped and continues to influence our society today. And whereas Juneteenth today celebrates African American freedom, while also encouraging self-development and respect for all cultures. And whereas Lawrence and Douglas County will commemorate Juneteenth with a number of events from June 16 through June 17, 2023. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023 as Lawrence Juneteenth Celebration, and call upon all residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to commit to our community to increase, increasing awareness and understanding of our shared history and how it shapes our lives today. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll see y'all there.
Yep. All right. Looks like our next proclamation is proclaim the week of June 17 through 23, 2023 as National Waste and Recycle Workers Week. Sherri, do we have anybody to speak to that one?
Yes, we do.
Right. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. Mike Lawless, Deputy Director for Municipal Services and Operations. I'm excited to be here tonight to celebrate Waste and Recycle Workers Week that's coming up. Our employees pick up trash recycling and yard waste, and they do this six days a week. They do this until the job is done. They don't get to go home. Just because the 2:00 day ends, they're here till the work is complete for those six days a week. They work in all kinds of weather conditions, whether it be a very warm day like today or some of the cold weather that we had earlier this year, whether it's raining, snowing, sleeting. They're out there, they're doing that work. They also work in all kinds of conditions, from the alleys that we have to the residential neighborhoods. Then they go out to the landfill to empty the trucks that we fill. They also go to the material recycling facility, oh, sorry, recovery facility, to empty the recycle trucks. We have dedicated employees, and I'm proud to work with them every day. And I want to thank you for celebrating Waste and Recycle Workers Week, and thank you for this proclamation.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Whereas Lawrence celebrates the week of June 17 through 23, 2023 as National Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And whereas sanitation and solid waste workers have worked selflessly and tirelessly in all types of environments, whether pandemic, civil unrest, and at risk to themselves and to provide solid waste services to protect communities and residents, prevent disease, and keep our community clean, safe, and beautiful. And whereas the people who serve the city of Lawrence's Municipal Services and Operations Department contribute significantly to the safety, health, and welfare of our residents by processing thousands of tons of garbage, recycling, and composting annually. And whereas the residents of Lawrence, Kansas depend on the collection, proper disposal of waste, recyclables, compostables, compostables, and LEED and LIM to promote a clean and tidy community regardless of weather and global pandemics. And whereas the proper collection, disposal, and maintenance of waste recyclables and compostables are vital to preventing disease and unsightly litter. And whereas the city of Lawrence values and celebrates our local solid waste workers for their commitment to our residents, businesses, and communities as professional employees. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17 through 23, 2023 as National Waste and Recycle Workers Week, and urge all residents to join me in thanking the hardworking men and women who ensure our communities are kept safe, clean, and healthy. All right. Now we'll move on to item C, public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items that remain to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Each person will be limited to three minutes. All right, Sherri, if you would, go ahead and start that portion.
Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Johnson, and I am here with SB 180 Lawrence. SB 180 makes it possible to criminalize trans people for using sex segregated spaces like bathrooms. This past March, I went to the state Capitol as part of my job. I went wearing a full suit and spectator shoes from my boyfriend. I interacted with everybody as a man. Despite this, when I went to the bathroom later to wash my hands, a man noticed me and followed me out when I left. I knew he recognized me as a trans man from the way he glowered at me when I stopped by the water fountains for a drink. He continued trailing me until I moved quickly enough to lose him in the crowd. Since then, I wonder what would have happened if SB 180 wasn't in effect. He could have reported me to Capitol Security, who then could have removed me from the bathroom or the building altogether. I could have been questioned, arrested, or fined simply for washing my hands after lunch at a public event I was intending for work. Additionally, my sex marker on my ID, which still reads as female, would have immediately outed me. If I don't get a change to mail by July 1st, I lose a chance to do so altogether as a consequence of SB 180. No SB 180 Lawrence wants Lawrence to remain a safe place for trans people. Therefore, we demand that, one, the City Commission declare they will not enforce SB 180; two, the Police Department declare they will not fine, arrest, detain, surveil, or incarcerate trans people for using sex segregated spaces; and three, that the City Commission issue an ordinance that Lawrence will be a sanctuary city for all trans people. I have been a part of the Lawrence community for seven years. Please keep Lawrence safe for me and all the other trans people here. Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next person, and Sherri, if you could, just give me a heads up when we reach time.
I'll say time when we reach time.
Okay.
All right, before I get started, I just may say, hi, Craig, her neighbors. I would like to add that SB 180 is an inherent public safety risk to everybody in the city, not just trans people. In addition to harming trans people intrinsically, SB 180 encourages some of the most disruptive public nuisances in our society to essentially engage in their activities to an even greater extent. It gives them a legal backing to do so, functionally making them legally mandated vigilantes. As the last speaker noted, people have followed him into the bathroom, recognizing that he's trans and intending to harass him, but utterize being unable to due to legal limitations. With those legal limitations gone, these people don't really necessarily care if you personally are trans as long as you look potentially trans, or as long as they think they can identify you. The last speaker obviously wasn't like, obviously trans. There could be a cisgender man that looks just like him, and to an equal extent, any transphobe would follow that person into the bathroom and harass them equally as they would a trans person. Functionally, SB 180 gives a legal mandate to any form of public nuisance vigilante, bigot, whatever, to follow us into bathrooms, harass us, peer through bathroom stall doors, and essentially pose a public safety risk to the people living in Lawrence and in Kansas as a whole. Additionally, this needs to be dealt with with extreme urgency, as once you open the Pandora's Box of vigilanteism, it's very difficult to close. Even if SB 180 were blocked in Lawrence three weeks from now, once people have started acting as vigilantes, they may not necessarily listen to this. It is best to stop SB 180 before this becomes a potential risk.
If you're interested in public comment, you can just keep lining up and moving through.
Vice Mayor and members of the commission, my name is Sylvie Altough. I am a trans woman living here in Lawrence, Kansas, and like the last two speakers, I'm here to speak with you about SB 180. I am a member of this community. My family owns a house here. I own a business. I have friends. I perform music. I write. I babysit. And after July 1st, I will be breaking the law every time I leave the house and engage in public life if I have to use the restroom, when I am volunteering with Food Not Bombs. I will be breaking the law. I will be in violation of SB 180. I've heard through some of my friends in the LGBT community that many of you members of the commission find SB 180 abhorrent, that you disagree with it, that you disapprove of it, and you have no intention of enforcing it here in Lawrence. And that's wonderful to hear, and it does nothing to protect my community or my family. Your good intentions are appreciated but insufficient. And if anything is, if we do not get anything more than good intentions, my family and members of my community will have to leave this town and this state for our own safety. Lawrence touts itself as a progressive, open-minded place where diverse individuals and their families are welcome, and Lawrence is not living up to that promise now. We need something more than private well wishes. We need a resolution. We need an ordinance. We need something to actually protect ourselves from the implications of SB 180. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Rowan Schering. I'm a longtime Lawrence resident, and I am also here to talk about SB 180. We must not stand idly by as the targeting and harassment of trans people is legally enforced. We might not be able to stop SB 180 at a state level, but we can still show up for each other and stand up to an unjust law. Please create and pass an ordinance establishing Lawrence as a sanctuary city for trans people. And please have the City of Lawrence officially state that it will not enforce SB 180. And please have the Lawrence Police Department create an official policy that it will not arrest, harass, detain, or otherwise, or otherwise essentially legally discriminate against trans people under the guide of SB 180. Thank you for everything that you have done and continue to do to make Lawrence a safe and inclusive place for people to live and to make it someplace that I'm proud to call my home.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Monti Koah Johnson, and I live here in Lawrence. Commissioners, I come to you tonight to speak on behalf of myself and all other transgender and gender nonconforming people in Lawrence, Kansas. We are not asking, we are not begging, we are not stating, oh, we are stating that you are going to be passing these demands that we have made. You claim to be on our side? If that is true, you will make an ordinance as soon as possible. This ordinance will state that SB 180 will never be enforced in Lawrence, Kansas, and neither will future outwardly transphobic legislation. Do not ask me to calm down when you will never understand what it is like to be inside my shoes. I'm scared. Our demands are the bare minimum. They are nonnegotiable, and you work for us. You claim to be our ally, and yet you have been silent about what you plan to do to combat SB 180. We have written out what we want you to do. Pass these demands. Lawrence will not enforce SB 180. Lawrence Police will not enforce, arrest, or detain people under the guide of SB 180. And Lawrence will make an ordinance to become a sanctuary city to protect transgender and gender nonconforming people from SB 180 and other transphobic legislation. Thank you.
I didn't have anything prepared. I'm not that smart. My name is Magnus Prim. I'm a lifetime Lawrence resident. I've been here since I was a baby. I was born in Topeka. I've been a lifelong Kansas resident, and I'm also transgender. One thing that I always appreciated growing up in Lawrence is that it is, at the very least from the outside compared to the rest of the state, relatively left-leaning, relatively progressive, and relatively kind compared to many other places in our country. I was very lucky to grow up in a place where, in general, I wasn't going to be harshly condemned for being the person that I was, for not necessarily fitting in in the way that many people expected me to. One thing that has been disappointing, growing up as an adult here, is seeing the many ways in which the city underperforms when it comes to actually standing up for minorities. I'm thrilled that we have a formal celebration of Juneteenth in our city now. I am less than thrilled that there has been no public statement as of yet about SB 180, especially considering the many ways in which gender discrimination is racialized in our country. I'm particularly concerned about the implications of legal harassment and public vigilantism with regards to gender discrimination and people not performing gender in the way that is considered adequate in our country. I would respectfully urge the commission to consider that there is not much point in having any form of celebration for racial equality if we are not going to also have celebration for gender equality, considering the many ways in which not only women, but also men of color are targeted for their own failures to meet the, let's say, racialized ideal standard that our country has set. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Justin Brace. I'm the Executive Director of Transgender Kansas. My pronouns are he/him, and I am an intersex trans man. When Transgender Kansas was founded in 2019, we decided to locate Lawrence as our headquarters and are currently in running for best of Lawrence. We chose this because Lawrence has been a safe place for us. We love our community, and we used to be here a very long time. Last week, we sent you proposed legislation over email and mail for an ordinance to enact this city to be a sanctuary city, as we have in 20 other cities we are currently working with. We will send it again tonight after this meeting, but after having our organization be the ones to sue the state to allow us in the first place a few years ago to change our gender markers, and we won, we are asking that you, here in Lawrence, don't enforce SB 180, because there's a reason we won that lawsuit. There's a reason that we are here today. Our students in our schools, KU, USD 497, both have LGBT groups. We are going to be deterring students and families from moving to Lawrence if we do not have a sanctuary city. We have been working with the Police Department and LMH to protect trans people and further equality. All of that will be repealed if you do not make Lawrence a sanctuary city. We do not want the economic hit. We don't want the safety hit. We don't want people to be falsely calling the police on people they think are trans or are not trans every time one of us wants to use the bathroom when we're out and about, especially myself, an educator with USD 497. We need to enact a sanctuary city, and we look forward to working with all of you on making that happen, because it is not an option. Everyone in this community's safety is at risk if we do not do something. Thank you.
My name is Christina McKenna, and I come to you as a cisgendered woman and a mother. I have asexual and bisexual children in my family, and without doing some measure to protect them, you will lose my family in Lawrence. We just bought a house here last year. The school got closed down where we were living, and we are now trying to figure out how to take care of that for our family. Do not discriminate against my children. Do not discriminate against single parents who have to take their other gender children into bathrooms and take care of them. Do not discriminate against people who have disabled children and need to take care of them. It doesn't matter what age they are. Sometimes, an adult child cannot handle themselves in a public restroom. We need to allow for families to be the families they are and to raise their children the way they need to. We need to allow for parental love to still happen with our children and without it being a gender marker issue. I may never be discriminated against because I was born female, but I have other things that people assume just because of how I look. that people assume just because of how I look. Would you like someone assuming something of you just because you look a little different than them? If not, do not enforce SB 180. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Devra Arcakita, and I am mad that I have to be here to talk about why people deserve to have basic human rights. Like, where else are they supposed to go if not the bathroom? I'm a queer woman. I know that a lot of people argue that are like on the opposition, that they're worried about sexual assault, and I've never felt unsafe in a bathroom with a trans person as somebody who has been a victim of sexual assault. But I have always felt unsafe being in a room with people who think that other people are lesser than them and do not deserve any rights. It starts with bathroom laws. Where does it go from there? It will only escalate. The building blocks for genocide is in your hands, so make the right choice.
Hi, my name is Carly Pryor. I have come as a private citizen against SB 180. I don't really need to say anything that hasn't been said before. I'm sure y'all can tell there are some pretty high tensions and pretty emotions, pretty high emotions. I would like, whatever you guys decide going forward, that you please remember to keep transparent. If there is an issue with state or county or federal legislation that is barring you from doing what we are asking, begging, pleading, and demanding for, that you be completely transparent, that you let us know how we can support this town to do what this town needs to do. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Evan Waszczek, concerned citizen. I have friends and family who are trans and who are queer, and this town I moved to about five years ago, and it has prided itself on being inclusive and building on the history of the John Brown image. And if we can't live up to even the standards of basic human dignity and allowing people to be in bathrooms and not be victims of vigilante justice, then I can't see any justice and any reason to continue. Thank you.
My name is Amy Helmer. I'm from South Lawrence. I think, I just got here, but I assume most people have already brought up, you know, these are human rights we're talking about. This is the protection of trans people we're talking about. And that, I hope, will be enough for us to consider protecting this community, but if it's not, I want to point out that you can't afford to lose the people who will leave if it's not protected. Every conversation I've had since SB 180 came out with my queer community has pretty much been a little bit of small talk, and then, how long can you stay here? How long can you survive in Lawrence? How long can you stay in Kansas before you move? Most of my friends are planning to move. These are people who are community educators. These are teachers. These are social workers. These are campaigners, people who are canvassing, talking about candidates, making people aware of the issues that happen here. These are people who work blue collar. These are people that keep the city running. These are people that need to be here for the trans kids who will need someone to protect them. So, in the spirit of human rights, but also in the spirit of keeping Lawrence Lawrence, please pass this sanctuary ordinance.
Hi, I am not trans, but I just wanted to share a little experience to maybe kind of hit home some of these things. The other day, someone was, a cisgendered man, was hitting on me and asked if I was trans, and I said, "No." And he said that I was lying because my shoulders tell a different story. So imagine, just like, just, what am I gonna do? And I feel like that I present pretty, I don't know, like, pretty cis here, and I'm just like, I'm gonna go into a bathroom and somebody's gonna be like, "Are you trans?" Your shoulders, because I, because I have shoulders, apparently. This is, this is someone who's not trans even, and I have many people in my life that I love, and I've also never been scared of any of the trans people I've met in my life. I'm not afraid of sharing a bathroom. I have been assaulted multiple times, and none of them were by trans people. I just, I love Lawrence. I grew up here, and I had a conversation with my partner the other day about whether it was safe for us to stay here, or whether we might need to find some other place. I don't want to leave. I love Lawrence, and I just hope that you will all, like, I don't know, make me proud.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jenny Robinson. I'm a social worker and an LGBTQIA-affirmative therapist here in Lawrence. I'm here to speak with you about SB 180. As a queer woman and therapist who works predominantly with queer and trans folks, I experience and see the distress that transphobic and homophobic legislation has on our community. I can't tell you how many conversations I've had with people who are considering leaving, wishing they had the means to leave. Kansas is our home. Lawrence is our home. Our community members deserve to feel safe here, deserve to live and thrive and find joy here. This is not just a bathroom bill. This is a bill that says you are dangerous, and we will protect our fragile understanding of the world by means of violence. The enforcement of this bill opens historically oppressed and marginalized folks up to further violence and oppression. It is not based in any kind of supportive evidence, only in fear, unconscionable ignorance, and hatred. Our city came alive this past weekend to celebrate Pride. If you allow this bill to become enforceable in our city, your show of pride is an empty shell. If you allow this bill to be enforced, you're actively contributing to the erasure of and violence against our trans community members. I urge you to not only create an ordinance establishing Lawrence as a sanctuary city for trans and gender nonconforming people, but also require a statement from the Chief of Police detailing their plan for how they will respond when erroneous reports are made, and explicitly how they will maintain Lawrence as a sanctuary city. Without an ordinance or clearly agreed-upon plan, we open ourselves up to misinterpretation, change direction, and ultimately, the continued violence against and oppression of our trans community members. To be focused, clear, and direct on this is to save the lives and protect the well-being of our community members. Thank you for your work on this and for your time.
My name is Ilya Vernikov. I'm a cisgender man, and I moved here in August. When I moved here, I was told that Lawrence was somewhat of a gay Mecca of Kansas and the Midwest in general, but with the passing of SB 180, I personally couldn't believe it. SB 180 threatens the safety and the comfort of my friends, my family, and a lot of people that I care about. The SB 180 campaign that I would consider successful demands three very easy-to-enforce things. Firstly, the City of Lawrence will not enforce SB 180. Secondly, the Police Department of Lawrence will not arrest, detain, survey, incarcerate people under the guise of SB 180. And lastly, the City of Lawrence will create an official ordinance that establishes this city as a sanctuary for trans people. That's all I ask. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Iridescent. I am a former teacher, a resident of Lawrence, and currently an educator, working here at KU. I am here representing Equality Kansas, and I'm here really to speak about SB 180 and specifically about the harm that it's going to do and where this comes from. I've testified at our state Capitol multiple times, and like our first speaker said, I was uncomfortable when I was there. I used the restroom. I was followed when I was in the restroom. I was mocked when I testified, and I was mocked when I was unable to testify because our state legislature didn't want to give us the time, because they wanted to give the time to every single speaker that they had. They're out of state, or they're doctors who have not been practicing medicine for over 30 years. The reason I bring this up, because I didn't get the chance to testify against SB 180, is really because we're not given the time or the care or the consideration from our state legislature. But we need that kind care and consideration here, because Kansas should be a state for everyone, whether that's gender identity, gender expression, race, religion. You should have the freedom to choose and the freedom to live as you want. Lot of this legislation that we've seen across this country, because we've seen this sweeping wide, and Amy spoke earlier about friends who have been considering leaving. I've grown up in Kansas my entire life. I grew up in Shawnee, and I moved here to go to grad school. I was one of those friends who does not feel safe in our state, but I would like to continue to still feel as safe as I can in Lawrence. I have been stalked about once a month since last August by members of our community who oppose this ban that we want to put on SB 180. Laws like this have been sued across the country, mostly because our rights are protected under the Equal Protection Clause. The reason I am here is to speak out of justice and out of what we pride ourselves to be, which is the free state. And if we want to be the free state, we have to make it free for everyone. Earlier, we've heard people talking about genocide. We've had people talking about how they, cisgender people who have been questioned because of their physical appearance. This is the first stage of genocide, and if you need me to, I can email and explain why I've done it with the legislature. We deserve to live, and we deserve to live just like anyone else with the same peace and tranquility. Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Jo Leipel, and I go to the University of Kansas for Claire Night Performance. Every month or so, I have a wind ensemble concert where members of my ensemble or orchestra have segregated dressing rooms. Oftentimes, if we have a guest artist, there will not be enough dressing rooms to have a gender nonconforming dressing room. Therefore, I would be put under pressure for, I would be fearful of harassment or detainment for doing, for participating in activities that are required for my major. Also, something I haven't heard anyone else here tonight speak about is the higher suicide rates among transgender people in the United States of America, especially among trans This bill will inevitably result in higher trans suicide rates, especially among our kids. Please do not enforce SB 180. The Lawrence Police Department should not arrest or detain trans and gender nonconforming people using SB 180. The City of Lawrence needs to enact an ordinance to establish Lawrence as a sanctuary city for trans and gender nonconforming people, as Kansas City has already done. Inaction for establishing this ordinance will be intentional. Will open trans people up to harassment, detainment, and will increase suicide rates in our community. I beg you, do not enforce SB 180. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Claire, and I use she/her pronouns. There are people I love who are trans and gender nonconforming, people in my family, my friends, people I work with, some of my faith community members, people in Lawrence. And I hope to one day be a mental health therapist, and I hope to work here in Lawrence and give back to the community that has given so much to me. And in order for me to do my job, I have to make sure that the City of Lawrence is doing theirs. So I'm here with No SB 180 to say, "Please make this a sanctuary city," just as Kansas City, Missouri, has declared itself a sanctuary city in May. The reason I want Lawrence to be a sanctuary city is not just so we can protect our community members today, but to protect future community members. The Trevor Project estimates that more than 1.8 million LGBTQ youth ages 13 to 24 seriously consider suicide each year in the United States, and at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. The Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health found that 45% of LGBT youth seriously consider attempting suicide in the past year, including more than half of transgender and non-binary youth, as we have seen in more anti-queer legislation than ever before. This past weekend, I went to Pride, and I met three teenagers from Marysville, Kansas. It's 100 miles away, in a very Republican county, and these three teenagers told me that it was their third and fourth Pride, and it was my first Pride, and I'm 23. These teenagers, who cannot leave their homes because they're not yet 18, have hope because there are cities like Lawrence who give them a fighting chance. In order to heal from depression, to heal from suicide, we have to have hope. These bills are very anti-hope. They're anti-trans, they're anti-hope. So please help us make Lawrence a place of hope for these teenagers, like the ones I met from Marysville, who traveled, again, 100 miles to be here for Pride. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, if you want, though, you can raise that up, because, there you go.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Megan Williams. I use she/her pronouns, and I am very proud to be working with some amazing trans residents on the No SB 180 campaign here in Lawrence. I'm a cisgender woman. I'm a proud feminist, and I know that this is not about protecting cis women. This is about upholding patriarchy, which harms me and my trans sisters and my gender nonconforming siblings. I just want to say that some of the most incredibly beautiful human beings in my life are trans, non-binary, and gender nonconforming people. They enrich my life in so many ways, and I just, I demand, I do, I demand that you not enforce SB 180, that the Lawrence Police does not enforce SB 180, and that you make this city a sanctuary city for trans people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Miguel. I'm a Lawrence resident, and I'm also here with the No SB 180 in Lawrence campaign. My trans partner is here with me today. We've been together for three and a half years in Lawrence. Up until now, we've been able to live our lives in this community in relative peace. We've been able to go to events at the Lawrence Public Library and other city institutions without worrying about whether or not my partner could use the bathroom, in peace. With the passage of SB 180 at the state level, our safety has been thrown into question. We can no longer be certain that we can go to the library, use the city pool, or go out to eat at a local restaurant without having to wonder if he'll have to face discrimination for simply existing. As the political leaders of our community, you stand at a historic crossroads, like many leaders have before you, who've been tasked by those above with carrying out an unjust law. You can either choose to enforce the oppression of marginalized people in your community, or you can make a stand and protect them from discrimination and abuse. I urge you to make the right choice. Choose not to enforce SB 180. Choose to pass an official ordinance making Lawrence a sanctuary city for trans people. And direct the Lawrence Police Department to enact an official policy that it will not enforce discrimination against trans people in Lawrence. Choose to stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I came here to speak about something else, what happened last week, but I'm gonna hold off on that till next week. But I do want to add, for everyone here, just so people know what I'm talking about, last week, the mayor broke the rules and threw out a speaker who was trying to criticize the Police Department. So I'm gonna save that for next week, but what, some ideas I've just been having is, just off the top of my head, is there any way we can make our own law against false accusations? So if someone wants to complain- So if someone wants to complain that someone's using the wrong bathroom—if they're wrong, can there be legal ramifications against them for saying someone's—the gender that they're not? Just because that puts more pressure on them to be sure before you go and start harassing people. Let's see, oh, yeah, like, I fully support what everyone here is asking for, but also, just when it comes to trans issues, I think about what our own city has done. There is a law against women going topless, and I've argued against that because that differentiates between a man and a woman's body, and I believe a high court has ruled against that and that it's unconstitutional because it's sexist. Yet, I've mentioned that, and I don't believe our city has made—it—I don't know, maybe they have, but last I knew, we still had that law on the book, and if there's a topless woman—I mean, I've seen it on the community scanner, people call it in to complain. Why don't we get rid of that rule? I mean, let's talk about body anonym—uh, autonomy. Ah, gosh, I'm all messed up, but just people—if a man should have the right to do something, so should a woman. And like, rules like that, that differentiate between a man and a woman's body, that's part of what's leading up to what bathroom you have to use. So why doesn't the city also look at some of our own laws that are outdated and start getting rid of those? And fully—I fully support making this a sanctuary city for the trans community. Thank you.
Can you hear me, or should I? You're okay? Okay, sorry. My name is Merritt Parsons. I just wanted to talk about, everyone else is talking about, Senate Bill 180, just because I've been following it for a long time, and this is not—I have it here with me. This is—it says it's here to protect women, and there is nothing in here that protects the rights of women at all. It's hate legislation, honestly. And if we enforce this in Lawrence, that's going to be pretty much government-issued harassment, government-backed harassment of members of our community. And I am a ciswoman, and so I can't completely speak on the experiences of my trans constituents. But what I will say is, I do not think that anyone should feel unsafe to go outside because they don't know if they're going to have a place that's safe for them to, like, go to the bathroom or just exist. And I also don't think that we should be giving anyone—we shouldn't let anyone think that they have the power to look at me or anyone in here or out there and decide whether or not we're feminine enough to exist in a space with them. So, yeah, that's what I have. Thank you.
I'm Hannah Blair. I'm trans feminine. I'm a childcare worker and a trained school psych living here in Lawrence. Actually, came straight from work with snot on my shirt, so thought it was really, really important to be here to talk to y'all. Every day, I look at the news, and I feel threatened by the widespread oppression queer people are facing, and it boggles my mind that basic human rights such as being able to go to the restroom are treated as—by the majority—as something that's worthy of debate. Meanwhile, in my life and the life of my siblings, we're considering our options. We're looking at the ACLU's map that tracks the ever-increasing 491 proposed pieces of anti-queer legislation across the country, and looking for the safest place to live. And many consider upending their lives to move to those safe places, but as the days go by, those safe places dwindle more and more. So this erosion of freedom is the antithesis to the founding principles of the United States, and SB 180 passing confirms a genuine—in a genuine visceral way—that queer Kansans are less free than cisgender, straight Kansans. Already, my queer siblings approach the simple, private task of using the restroom with anxiety. We fear judgment, we fear violation, in the worst cases, we fear altercation. Now the very thing we fear is being supported and provoked by the state of Kansas. Yeah, so whichever restroom queer people choose is seen as an act of defiance. Either we choose one, and we're defying socially constructed gender norms, or we choose the other, and now we're defying the law. And both choices risk discrimination. Both laws, whether unspoken or written, need to change. And as representatives of the people, you have a responsibility to meet the oppression of this bill with opposition. Please give queer Kansans of Lawrence another reason to hope. It's the mark of a strong civic body to recognize an unjust law and openly defy it. SB 180 is unjust because it's degrading to trans and non-binary people. It is a law created by a majority movement imposed on a minority group. Thank you very much.
Like Chris Flowers, I came here to speak about the lawlessness of the commission last month, but I'm going to belay that as well because of the importance of the issue before me. My only purpose up here tonight is to remind everybody what happened last year when we discussed a sanctuary city issue. This was about the immigration sanctuary city, one that a number of people came in here, and I think it's—we're going to need a lot more pressure, and honestly, we're going to need a change in the commission to be able to have any kind of sanctuary around here, because these exact commissioners are the ones that buckled to state law last year and got rid of the immigration sanctuary. So we're going to need new commissioners. That's up to you to vote new commissioners in. That's all I have to say tonight, guys. Have a good night.
Nancy Snow. Good to see you all. I haven't been here for a while. I, too, had some comments that I'm going to hold until next week. However, following up with Michael's comment, I did look up on the Lawrence Times website the bad news that the Lawrence City Commission submitted to state law, struck down immigrant protections from sanctuary ordinance by a vote of four to one. Commissioner Shipley, at that time, you were mayor, and you were the only one to vote against. That buckling, that backing down, as I understand it, thank you for that. Some of the other commissioners were upset. Commissioner Larson is pictured dabbing tears from her eyes. Commissioner Sellers said she would fight on. Commissioner Finkeldey, here's your quote. Here's what you said. Commissioner Brad Finkeldey said the commission had been, quote, "put in a difficult situation," end quote, and he agreed with the others that they would continue to fight to be a welcoming community. Well, here's your chance. Fight to be a welcoming community. You haven't done well on the issue of homelessness. That's my issue, as you know. I'm continuing to fight for that. Our trans brothers and sisters and their allies are fighting for their rights. Join the fight. Pass this ordinance. Don't back down. Please, do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm Marcy Francisco. I came down on a different issue, but first, I will address Senate Bill 180. After hearing all these comments, I'm even more proud to have been a strong no against that, and apologetic that more of my colleagues had not yet been able to visit the new airport at MCI, where the bathrooms are not gender-specific. So hopefully, we have an opportunity to—it's not cheap, but as we build, make sure that our restrooms are not gender-specific. That makes it possible for all of us to use that space. Anytime you've used a porta potty, it didn't say men or women. It just said, you can use this. So I'll go ahead. I came down to talk about something on the consent agenda, but also thought I would address Ordinance 9876, which is our rental licensing ordinance. I'm pleased that the commission has very much supported landlords doing Section 8 housing, and I've mentioned this to a couple people.
Marcy, I think this is just public comment. Would you be able to hold that until the consent agenda part of it?
No, that's on our consent. Go on.
I'm not talking about something on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I'm also saying that I'm talking about Ordinance 9876, which is rental licensing. I appreciate that the commission has supported Section 8, and specifically 6-1306K exempts Section 8 properties from license fees and inspections. Because these properties already undergo an annual inspection, yet 6-1310 calls for the inspection of 20% of the total properties with inspection licenses. So I'm hoping that you might consider a change to the ordinance to call for an inspection of 20% of the properties, exempting any that are already being inspected under Section 8. Right now, if you do the math, if you have 10 properties and eight of them are Section 8, the other two have to undergo inspections. And I believe that you don't want to eliminate any inspections, but you also don't want to penalize those landlords that are participating in the Section 8 ordinance. So I'd be happy to follow up later on any of those comments, but appreciate this opportunity to address this issue. And I want to also say, I so appreciated the good work from the rental inspection staff this past year, working with us. Thank you.
Is that all the public comment in the room or here? Okay. Vice Mayor, I'll start calling on those on Zoom.
Sounds good, and sorry about that, Marcy.
Alex Kimball-Williams?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm here to speak for SB 180 as well. We cannot accept this state legislation here in Lawrence. We cannot normalize dehumanizing trans people, because that's what this is. It's saying that they don't matter, it places them in harm's way, and it puts a target on their back for people to, as people have already described, self-deputize, to harass and harm them, which is just amazing to think about, you know, when they're already out here with some of the highest assault and murder rates without a law like this in place in Kansas. It's not lost on me that SB 180 is mislabeled as the Kansas Women's Bill of Rights, and it's also not lost on me that the bill jeopardizes over $17 million in federal funding for Kansas. It's really important to look at who's passing the laws, and it's white cismen who make up the majority of the state legislature leadership. They want to call something the women's protection, though, when it's really about maintaining their superiority. So of course, the law doesn't consider all the intricacies of single parenthood or disability because it's the most privileged people who are putting it together. And Governor Kelly was completely right to veto this when it was just a bill. Folks deserve our support whose lives are at stake, and the goal isn't to live under the state's law like there's nothing that we can do. We're not here to build another underground railroad, but rather to challenge the state's law through our example of policies. This law is about showing some of the best people in our community that they don't belong. And the law is already losing funding for the state of Kansas, but there's so much more that we can lose. That's my baby. We don't stand up. As the blue dot in Kansas, we need to stand up, or else other Kansas communities don't have as much of a chance. And I'm speaking as a native person on this land, and the majority of you are settlers. And us as indigenous people predominantly respect trans and Two-Spirit people, so I just want to put that out there as something to remember and think about as you respond and make laws for stolen land. Thanks.
Jeremy Roth-Cuchel?
Thank you. Greetings. This is Jeremy Roth-Cuchel, and I would like to speak to the importance of the respect that we must have in relationship to our government officials, both elected and non, in terms of the input and the deliberative process by we, the people. This is proven out by the vitality of the public input that the commission has just heard, which, if the very harsh deployment of the newly-created term of business germane to the commission had been used in ways that the absentee mayor and commissioners have done in prior meetings in terms of restricting public input about issues that are clearly germane to the business of the city and the commission, that this could have been harshly shut down, because is there a bill yet? Does the city commission have a bill in front of them? No. So this is just one more example of the importance of understanding the nature of our system of governance. In the hierarchy of sovereignty, we, the people, are the legitimate source of any proper deliberative governance. And I will just point out, in terms of missing minutes—so I won't be able to address them because they are not there from the last meeting—that people who might be more—read more than listen or watch will not be able to know, based on the minutes of this meeting, what interested members of the public have given over to the commission. So we need to fix that. We need a real, written minutes record. And then additionally, in terms of Juneteenth and the celebration of Juneteenth, I want to return to the vital issues that we, as Lorenzians, need to understand in terms of the background of our system of government, which includes the city manager system of government. I will remind folks of an article in the Mainers at mainersnews.com titled "99 Years: The Racist Roots and the Results of the City Manager System of Government" by Samuel James, written just last year. So now we're at 100 years since Ku Klux Klansmen, cowardly—with a K—marching down the street in their white gowns through Portland, Maine in 1923, were supporting the city manager form of government. These are the kinds of big issues that we need to be able to talk about and know that our city commissioners, our mayor, our vice mayor, our city manager, our other city officials will not try to harshly abort our debate and our deliberative input. Thank you very much.
I'd like to start by saying, thank you, commissioners, for providing this opportunity to hear public comment. I am here today to address Kansas Senate Bill 180, capsized as Women's Bill of Rights. First and foremost, this bill was born out of hate and discrimination. This bill does not establish any rights for women. It only works to restrict the rights of transgender population. Don't be fooled by hate speech. Additionally, the so-called testimony—which was nothing more than hate speech—presented to the legislature and which was used to pass this bill—is not based in fact. It just simply is not true that biological boys—I refer to call them—I refuse to call them men—are pretending to be transgender women and attacking women in public restrooms. The facts show that biological little boys, regardless of their age, are attacking women in all locations, and this bill will not change that. Secondly, this legislation is not based in science. There are 23 pairs of chromosomes that define every physical, psychological, and emotional aspect of the human body. The belief that 22 of these pairs of chromosomes combine in an infinite number of possibilities— The belief that 22 of these pairs of chromosomes combine in an infinite number of possibilities, while the 23rd pair can only be binary, is simply absurd. The truth, whether you choose to recognize it or not, is that the 23rd pair, the pair that determines gender, has the same infinite possibilities as the rest of our DNA. Third, this legislation is unconstitutional. The Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the right of the people to be secure in their persons against unreasonable searches. This law cannot possibly be enforced without violating this amendment, as conducting a search of my sexual genitalia would be nothing less than sexual assault, when I do not consent to any person conducting such a search, and all attempts to force compliance is sexual assault. Further, it would be a violation of the Fourth Amendment and HIPAA rights to search my medical records for such evidence. Additionally, searching previous civil court rulings, which were legal at the time of the ruling, or vital records held by this state or any other state for the purpose of enforcing this legislation, would violate the Fourth Amendment right of the people to be secure in their papers against unlawful search. A person simply making an accusation based on their opinion and lacking factual knowledge that I am male, female, transgender, or any other aspect of my physical characteristics simply cannot establish probable cause for such search. Finally, the Tenth Amendment prevents the states from enacting legislation that reduces, removes, restricts, or otherwise modifies the protections guaranteed to all citizens by the Fourth Amendment. Fourth, this legislation is unenforceable, as it does not contain an enforceability clause or specify penalties for violations. An unenforced law, also known as symbolic law or dead-letter law, is a law which is formally in effect, but is usually not penalized by a jurisdiction. Such laws are usually ignored by law enforcement, and therefore, there are few or no practical consequences for breaking them. The existence of unenforced laws has been criticized for undermining the legal system in general, as such laws may be selectively enforced. Lastly, on a personal note, I am a veteran of the United States Army. These attacks on my character by implying that I am a sexual predator, attacks on my identity through refusing to recognize my name and gender, attacks on my rights, as I previously described, and attacks on my freedoms through arbitrary and selective enforcement of this legislation is incredibly insulting. I wore the uniform honorably. I sacrificed and became disabled because of my service. I defended the very rights that are now being taken from me. I swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Now, my government, specifically the Republican Party, has positioned itself as a domestic enemy, and I will defend my Constitution, because as Americans, all people are guaranteed equal rights and protections under the law. Therefore, we, the citizens of Lawrence, Kansas, demand, and it is your duty--
Mr. Miller? Yes? You're well over your time. Sorry. I apologize.
My last paragraph, if you'll let me finish, Mayor.
I'm sorry. You're well over your time.
Okay. It is your duty, by your oath of office--
Sherry, would you be able to cut this longer off?
--to reject this law. Thank you. I yield back.
Kevin Elliott?
Hi there. I'm from Lawrence, Kansas, born and raised around here. Most of you all know me. The city commission has recently asked me to stand up and be a good citizen of this community, and I've done that. And now I'm asking you to make sure that me and my trans husband are not second-class in this community. I trust you will do that. I trust you heard what's been said tonight. So I really want to focus on a couple other things about this issue. Trans kids, trans people commit suicide at an incredible rate. And the proof shows that one affirming adult can make a difference. This is your chance to save somebody's life. If not, do what's right. Do what's good. Save somebody's life tonight. Please, I beg of you. I've never, never thought anything was more important in my life. We're part of this community, and we plan on staying part of this community, me, my husband, and our kids. We need to be sure that this community stays part of us. Thank you.
Cassie Ainsworth?
Hello, commissioners. I am here also to speak about SB 180. My name is Cassie Ainsworth. I use she/her pronouns. I am a therapist here in Lawrence. A good chunk of my caseload is trans and gender nonconforming folks. There's been so much valuable information presented to you all about so many variations of this, including the mental health component of this, but I think it's really important to name that I am deeply concerned about the mental health fallout from this bill going through, especially as has already been mentioned numerous times with this higher suicide rate in the trans community. Transphobia is trauma. Cis sexism is trauma. Not being protected, seen, valued in your community is trauma. We are neurobiologically hardwired for a sense of belonging. There's no way that somebody could experience a sense of belonging under the umbrella of what's being experienced here. And I'll have to admit, I didn't really prepare anything, mostly because I didn't think that my kiddo was going to let me talk here. She's been watching this whole thing with me. She's six years old. The reason she's been watching this whole thing is because her best friend is leaving the state. I had to explain to her, as I watched the tears well up in her eyes because she's losing her best friend, that the reason her family, that her friend is moving is because her family is fleeing the state, because the state is not safe for her family anymore. So I think it's really important to note the extent at which people are impacted by this. So I'm just asking you to please protect the people in the community that you serve. Thank you so much for your time and for hosting space for this.
Jack Hawthorne?
I am speaking tonight as a non-binary person who's lived in Lawrence for over 10 years and as a business owner, and as someone who's been discriminated against. When I've tried to use the bathroom before, I had an instance in, like, 2015 in St. Joe, where I was at a bar, and someone demanded to see my ID and told me there wasn't a trans bathroom. And there weren't laws on that I was aware of at the time. And now we do have a law like that. And it's not currently enforceable in any way, but we know that that's what they're going to do next. In Florida, you can get up to a year in prison for that now, for being trans and using the bathroom. I see people all of the time, people I love, people who I consider family, because queer people are my family. We are family. They are my siblings. They are running because they are scared and they are in danger. And the fact that I, as a community member, have to put up a sign in the window of my business to tell people that they can come in there and use the bathroom, that's a very dark place where we're at. We're in a very dangerous position. And so I ask that, with the power that you do have as city commissioners, do everything that you can to make this place a sanctuary for queer people, so at least not everyone has to leave Kansas. If we can make our blue bubble a sanctuary city, maybe Wichita can be a sanctuary city someday. But even if that's not within your power, work with us, please, to do everything we can in Kansas to try and make us safer, because this law is just intended to humiliate us. Thank you.
Kirby Evers?
Great. Thank you. Is the video and audio working, please?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. And I came tonight to discuss another matter following your public effort at shaming on May 16th, but that can wait, because how important tonight is to have this large community of people come to the town commission thinking something will be done. We are a town filled to the brim with John Brown talk and no action. We have actors doing that, and that's pretty much it. We must find ways to break away from this "we've always done it this way" orientation, which currently exists as ways to restrict new thinking, are focused on rather than looking for ways to get things done. We must insist our town legal team searches for ways to do things rather than finding ways not to do them. We must be able to scratch the surface of our town and find it has depth and not mere window dressing. I am hopeful my good friends who have appeared this night asserting their rights as Americans to participate and shape government will be listened to, and Lawrence can begin to recapture the vibrancy and the solidarity with regular people that we have missed for so long, because we have decided to go where the money is, with our focus on money. So let's see if you will accept the challenge to craft an ordinance to protect people. Thank you for your time.
Kirby Evers? Vice Mayor, I think that's all the public.
Vice Mayor, I sort of beg your discretion. I know it's unusual to ask for any comments from staff at this time, but I would do that.
It is unusual. And in lieu of everybody being here at this moment, it's something that I would lean towards, as opposed to making them wait towards for commission items. Did you have anything in particular you wanted to go ahead and say?
I really appreciate that, Vice Mayor. I believe that legal staff has looked into this somewhat. Is there any comments staff can make at this time?
And we're watching the issue closely. I'm Craig, recently tasked Dr. Muhammad and I to work on this matter and contact other communities. And we've also been in contact with the Kansas League of Municipalities, and they are promising to provide us updates as they learn more about it. So that's all I have to say at this time.
I've opened it up, and I don't apologize, Vice Mayor. It was worthy to get, at least to know that staff has been tracking this. Clearly, it's important to the community. What would normally happen is that we would, one of us might bring this up at commission items, which would be at the end of this meeting. We have a regular agenda, and you've all kindly come at public comment, which is what the Vice Mayor was commenting on. So I hasten to expect that all the commissioners have some feeling about this, but also I don't want to commandeer the meeting in a way that is unusual. But I do want to address the public and make sure they understand that we are addressing this.
Commissioner Sellers?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate commissioners simply making the comments. I do want to remind the commission that two weeks ago, I did bring this up in commission items, and the work that Tony and Dr. Muhammad are doing, I would imagine, is a continuation based on the question that I brought up in commission items regarding SB 180 when that was discussed. So I do believe that's been stated several times to those who have emailed and text in regards to this matter, and I just don't want commissioners to feel like we need to duplicate efforts that have already been done.
Thank you for the reminder, Commissioner Sellers. All right. With that, we close public comment and move us on to item D, Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are considered under one motion approved by one function. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak on an item that has been pulled from the Consent Agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Is there an item that any of the commissioners wish to be pulled from the consent? All right. I will open it up to the public. Is there an item that any of the public wish to be pulled from the consent?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Virginia.
This is Marcy Francisco. I'm asking if you would pull D6E for public comment.
Is there anyone online that would like to--
I'd like--
Okay. And no one online has indicated they have an item to pull--
Okay.
That's it. Vice Mayor?
All right. Thank you, Sherry. That's the case. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the Consent Agenda, absent D1A and D6E.
I move for approval of the--
Move.
Oh.
I counted two, so, okay.
Move in a second.
I mean, you stated the motion, so it made it easy to say so moved, so.
There you go.
All right. Looks like we have two on there. Looks like no opposition. And all those on paper, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Aye. Aye, said aye. I keep forgetting to say aye. I apologize. All right. Consent approved, absent D1A and D6E. We'll start with D1A.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. I just have a quick question. I was just wondering, where are the minutes from last city commission meeting, and if they will be added next time, or are we just not going to do them at all? Thank you. Because the only ones that are on here is the one from the joint with the county, but last meeting minutes aren't here yet, so, thank you.
I can go ahead and answer that, Vice Mayor, if you'd like to, or if you want to see if anybody else has public comment on the minutes before I respond.
Let's go ahead and see if anybody else has public comment before you respond.
Is there anyone in the room who wants to provide public comment on this item? Jeremy Roth-Cochell?
Okay.
Thank you. This is Jeremy Roth-Cochell, and I think that the question of minutes and missing minutes from weeks ago's meeting, including the question of what looked to me to be an unequal application of subject matter discrimination, potentially based on viewpoint discrimination or prior express viewpoint in terms of public comment, that then resulted in people being removed from the meeting, needs to be rectified. And it points to a bigger issue that we've been continuing to talk about in terms of the problem of these literarily incomplete minutes. And as the prior public comment deliberation pointed out, the minutes should cover the public controversies of the time, and they should also cover the kinds of details that we might need to consider in terms of whether the commission is unequally applying their own rules in terms of how public comment or comment on a specific agenda item are being applied with, to me, apparently time, place, and manner inappropriate discrimination based on viewpoint and subject matter jurisdiction that's not appropriate. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all the public comment.
Okay, Sheri, if you would, respond.
Yes, so we attempt to get the minutes on the next meeting, and generally, we're able to do that. We just had some technology issues with timestamping this one in the video, and so it will be on the next regular agenda. Our iCompass software we use is generally pretty reliable, but every now and then we run into glitches with being able to watch the video and make sure that we're getting it accurate. So they should be on the next agenda. And I also will say that we are currently looking at, we do use, put our videos on YouTube, which does transcriptions, but we're looking at a more useful way of having a transcription we'll continue to, that we'll bring forth to you all, but that way there is a more extensive record of what is discussed. Again, those will not be the minutes because we do action minutes, but we will have that looking at having a transcription available.
Thank you very much, Sheri. And this is an approval item, right?
That's correct. You'll need a motion.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the joint city commission county minutes of May 15 to 2023.
I would, first, I'd say thanks Sheri for looking into the transcription services. I do think that'll be a helpful addition. But I'd move to approve the city commission meeting minutes from the joint city commission, county commission meeting.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Looking as none opposed, and it's approved. Thank you as well, Sheri, for going and looking at that. Very helpful. Moving us on to D 6 E.
Thank you so much for allowing me to make a few comments about the process and the design. Good news, I'm more calm than I was over the weekend. I learned of this project from our Orea neighborhood residence president. He was asking if the parking request for here was on the agenda. That's been delayed to July, but we saw that the project for improvements to 11th Street was to be considered this evening. The report includes the comment that MSO staff has also contacted the property owners directly impacted by this project to inform them and gather feedback. If you look at the property or the map of this proposal, our property at 1101 Ohio is the only owner occupied property that is affected, and they hadn't heard back from us. I called the municipal services office on Monday. Indeed, a message had been left on our answering machine, but alas, if it's not blinking, I don't check the messages, and I don't always get messages from my otherwise very responsible spouse, Joe. I did get a call back on Monday, and our properties will be affected. The message is still on my machine. The only address was 1101 Ohio, not our property at 1046 Ohio. Two messages could have been helpful. The first city commission meeting I ever attended was over 50 years ago to express my objection to the alley easement between Louisiana and Ohio, 11th to 12th being abandoned. That leaves the properties on Ohio Street with no possibilities for off-street parking. I was asked if I had any concerns about the parking being eliminated. I do. It's almost always used, but then I heard that the decision to propose eliminating the parking was made at a previous multimodal transportation committee meeting, so at this point, it doesn't matter. Here are my asks. If there's more than one property involved, leave two messages. Mail would be preferable to voice. If the project is in an area with a neighborhood association, please also notify them. In this case, parking is a concern throughout our neighborhood. I understand there will be more detailed engineering discussions for project in historic district with sidewalks on two sides of the street. Please consider requiring sidewalk standards on only one side in terms of the width. We have a beautiful brick sidewalk with limestone edging. The sidewalk to the north has a lot more pedestrian traffic between the dorms and downtown. I assume that the project may block access to our driveway off 11th Street. I hope the city might consider extending the residents-only parking on Ohio for us during the construction phase, and I agree that the roadways, sewer, and water lines need to be improved, and look forward to the opportunities for residents to comment more.
Thank you, Marcy. All right, will we have any discussion from mission on this, or open it up to public comment?
You guys might ask staff if they have a comment on the process.
Is there any staff here that could speak to that?
Yes, Commissioners, good evening. Omar Mali, a project engineer, MSO. I'm the project manager for this project. So this agenda item is to authorize the city manager to sign a supplementary agreement with the engineering consultant we have, professional services engineering, professional engineering consultants, PEC, to continue with the design phase. So what was happened over the past couple of months were to go through the conceptual design and the three third-person design plans, and take a couple of multiple options on how to incorporate pedestrian and bike facilities in that project and that intersection area to the multimodal transportation commission, and we have done that on December 5th, and they have provided us with their recommended options to complete the design with. Now, the engagement that we've been personally, I was contacting the indirectly impacted properties, this is kind of an early engagement with the properties, property owners, so I've let them know, give them heads up about the project while we're still in the conceptual design, and give them the opportunity to provide their comments early on while we're in the third-person design. Now, we still have in the scope of work, public engagement, an official public engagement, where we will be inviting property owners in a specific radius so they could talk about the project, understand what is the project, and provide their feedback, and we could design around some of their feedback. So we will be reaching out to property owners more than what I've been personally now reached out to in the past couple of months, but that's going to come in on this supplementary agreement.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on this, or questions? Okay, at this point, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Sheri, is there any public comment in the room?
Yes.
Good.
Good evening, Michael Allman. I'm a bicycle advocate in Lawrence, and I support climbing lanes. I just got here, and I'm not sure what the position of former Mayor Marcy Francisco is, but I do support that, although I would say it's kind of odd that the first climbing lane that Lawrence has proposed is on a fairly unused street for bicyclists, one that which most of them have to walk up anyway, whereas 9th Street is a much higher priority for a climbing lane west of Avalon Road. The commission, planning commission and city commission has discussed that particular project a number of times, as well as the multimodal transportation commission, so I hope you noticed that that is in the capital improvement plan as a proposal. One other thing about this project that we're discussing tonight is that it also includes extending the counterflow bicycle lane on Louisiana Street, one block. This is a lane that, as I recall, Mayor Francisco initiated, one of the first bicycle lanes in Lawrence. Thank you, Mayor Francisco. And somewhere back when the university pretty much tore down a block of houses and put in scholarship halls, kind of a side note to that that most people didn't know is that the city gave KU Louisiana Street in the 1200 to 1400 block. I didn't know that happened. That bicycle lane disappeared in that block. It's all parking now for KU. It's a red zone. I would really like to see that renegotiated so this lane would retake its original form of three blocks. I don't know what can be done there, but thank you.
Is that all the public comment in the room? Jamie Miller?
I just wanted to draw attention to the comment that I placed in the meeting chat. Thank you.
That's all the public comment on this item, Vice Mayor.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and bring it back to us. Any further discussion on this item?
Looks like a good, I mean, good project. Look forward to having more conversation with the neighbors and walking on the climbing lane. I think the, I live right by the 9th Street. That's a hard one to climb up too without walking, but if you can do it, I'm proud of you. But I would move to authorize city manager to execute the supplemental agreement number one with professional engineering consultants in the amount of $185,009.85 to proceed with the final design of staff and MTCs recommend alternative for the reconstruction project of 11th Street, Indiana to Ohio and Louisiana, 11th to 12th, CIP MS 220063.
Okay.
Second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any, none opposed, so unanimous. All right, good to go. Thank you all. Moving us on, oh, I'm sorry.
Before we get started with regular agenda items, can we take a 10-minute break?
Oh, I apologize, Commissioner Sellers. Absolutely. 10-minute break, everyone, so meet back up at 7:33. Ten-minute break, everyone, so meet back up at seven thirty-three. Item F, regular agenda items. Number one, receive an update on the single-use plastic ban, or pl- single-use plastic bag draft ordinance to provide direction to city staff. Who is going to be addressing this?
I am. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Richardson. I'm the City Sustainability Director and I'm the champion of the environmental sustainability commitment in the city's strategic plan. Also with me tonight is Nancy Muma with the Sustainability Advisory Board, as well as on Zoom, Randy Larkin, our Deputy City Attorney, Jeff Crick, our Director of Planning and Development Services, and Brian Jimenez, Code Official and Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Tonight's agenda is to receive an update on the single-use plastic bag draft ordinance, and we are also requesting your feedback and direction. My presentation will be brief and I will hand it over to Nancy for a brief presentation as well. And all the staff are available for questions from the commission. So this topic has been discussed for several years now and this agenda item does have the link to all the previous meeting discussions. But as a reminder, we were here in January of this year to discuss with the city commission on policy options to reduce single-use plastic bags in the community, including a fee model, a ban model, an educational campaign. And we did ask for policy direction and you directed us to draft an ordinance that enacts a ban on plastic bags, single-use plastic bags. So the ordinance drafted by the city attorney's office is attached. The current effective date on this draft ordinance is January first of two thousand twenty-four. Just wanted to bring that up. This, this is a draft. So as with all my presentations about policy items, I do highlight which key performance indicator within our city's strategic plan is being impacted. And while this item does fall under the environmental sustainability commitment, it would not address or move the needle on any of our current KPIs on our strategic plan. With that said, the commission may choose to prioritize this work. Also, as noted in the memo, I just wanted to highlight that in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three, there was preemptive legislation that was introduced but not passed in the Kansas Legislature that would prohibit municipalities from adopting or enforcing an ordinance resolution or regulation that would restrict tax, prohibit, or regulate the use of something like single-use plastic bags, as well as plastic straws, cups, containers, et cetera. So back to this draft ordinance. This ordinance was shared with the Sustainability Advisory Board earlier this year and the board did have two edits for the ordinance. One was a typo that they caught and that has already been corrected in the draft that's before you. The second is they are requesting to add language requiring forty percent post-consumer recycled content for single-use paper bags and for reusable plastic bags. So basically, they would like to require of those bags that can still be distributed, like the paper, single-use paper bags and the reusable plastic bags, they would like a requirement that those be forty percent post-consumer recycled content. The Sustainability Advisory Board members did reach out to some grocery stores during the past couple months to discuss possibly adding this requirement of the forty percent post-consumer recycled content, which many other cities also require. And Nancy Muma can expand on the findings talking to grocery stores on this. One item I just wanted to highlight, as we've been discussing this over some time, there are some stores in Lawrence that have been working towards their goals to reduce single-use plastic bags. For example, Sprouts earlier this year made an announcement that before the end of the year at their checkout, they were going to eliminate single-use plastic bags. The Lawrence store is already making this transition and they offer reusable plastic bags, which are forty percent post-consumer recycled content and of which they charge ten cents per bag. These are the reusable plastic bags. Sprouts had already stopped offering the single-use paper bags. So with that super brief presentation, I am going to turn it over to Nancy Muma with the Sustainability Advisory Board for her brief presentation. And after Nancy's presentation, we will turn it over to you for.
I also want to mention that I have a PhD in pharmacology and toxicology and I'm the Chair of that department at KU. And so I'm going to tell you a little bit about the toxicity of plastics. And this would be a background for why I want to urge you to pass this ban. So, single-use plastics make up about forty percent of the plastics that are produced in our country and they don't degrade very quickly. They break down into smaller and smaller bits, nanoparticles, microparticles. Those particles are in the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the food we eat. So each and every week, on average, we consume about a credit card's worth of plastic. Each week. That's a lot of plastic in our bodies. And this stuff isn't benign. So it causes an immune response. Our bodies say, oh, that's foreign, let's go attack it. We get chronic inflammation from this. That chronic inflammation is associated with lots of diseases like cancers, like heart disease, bowel disease, arthritis, all kinds of problems like dementia and depression, anxiety. That's some of the stuff that I study in my lab at KU, okay? So, that in addition to the immune response, plastics also have some other chemicals that are associated with those, like hexavalent chromium, BPAs, the bisphenol group, PFAS. You've all heard about the toxicity of these chemicals. They cause cancer. They also are what we call endocrine disruptors. So they mimic the hormones in our body, our estrogen, testosterone. They disrupt the development of our reproductive systems. It decreases our fertility and it's especially dangerous for developing children and unborn children. So these plastics and chemicals have been found in placenta, human placenta and breast milk. And it causes infertility. It causes perturbations in our, in our reproductive systems. But the good news is, is we're here tonight and you can do something about it. You can decrease our exposure to plastic by banning single-use plastic bags, by requiring the plastic bags that are thicker and reusable have post-consumer recycled content. So that we decrease the amount of plastics we produce, the amount of plastics in our environment. So this would be a really terrific way to begin to address this, this terrible issue. So there are already over a hundred and fifty-two cities, nine going on ten states, that ban single-use plastic bags. There are many cities throughout our, our country and Washington State that require the thicker reusable plastic bags to be made up of forty percent post-consumer recycled content. So these bags are available. Currently, CVS, Walgreens, and Target use those plastic bags that have forty percent recycled content on the, the plastic bag themselves. So these plastic bags are available, the paper bags are available that have this recycled content. So I urge you to please consider not only banning plastic bags, but requiring the post-consumer recycled content. There's a lot of people here today that have brought their reusable bags. It's an easy pivot for us to, to, to use these bags instead of using bags a, a single time and throwing them away. So thank you so much and any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you very much. All right. This time I'd like to open it up to the commission for any questions.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Sorry, I hope I can't see everyone, so I hope I'm not interrupting. I was interested, Kathy, in the, the suggestion that we have a full-time, or then FTE, but that two-thirds of it may not be used on this program, but might be used on some other, I'm assuming code enforcement responsibilities. Can you clarify that at all?
Sure. And I do know that Brian and Jeff are also on Zoom, but I did want to just clarify, this is a position, the fiscal impact is a, that's a position that does not currently exist. So the Planning and Development Services Department is requesting that position, that FTE, for the two thousand twenty-four budget. And it is my understanding that they're estimating about one-third of that person's time would be for enforcement of this ordinance. And that would include salary, benefits, and a vehicle. Again, Jeff and Brian are on this call, so if they had additional information, they can. There's Brian.
Hi, Brian Jimenez, Code Official, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Kathy's spot on, on her overall statement on that. Basically, it's hard to predict how much time would be dedicated to this ordinance. Obviously, we believe the time would be more so at the beginning and hopefully go down as time went on and people became compliant. So it's a real, a, a rough estimate on our part, but the monetary value is, is accurate. The time spent is, is really a guesstimate. So we think we're in the, in the ballpark on that. Just to clarify or expand on what Kathy said, we, we would utilize the, the extra FTE to do the, to do the enforcement of this, but we also believe that the other time that this person would have available would be well spent on regular code enforcement activities that we can improve efficiencies on.
And just a little follow-up on that. I make, I made an assumption in my mind when I read it, would that be, for example, long-term rental, short-term rental, or would that be any kind of complaint-based code enforcement?
Great question, Commissioner Shipley. Just to give you a quick summary, I have four code compliance officers, two are specifically long-term and short-term rental, two officers for the entire city for all complaint proactive stuff. Little plug here, we've increased our population to over thirty thousand people. We've never increased our code enforcement staff from two. So we believe that this would be the opportunity to not only help out with the ordinance, but also help us in, in other aspects of our job that might be falling behind just due to the increased workload.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Sellers?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So to piggyback on that, Brian, I know you said that there's the anticipation and hopefully that the work would die down. So this is a way for us to bring another FTE on board for code enforcement to address the population growth. So is it in your mind, do you anticipate after maybe two or three years that this additional FTE would have no responsibility for code enforcement on the plastic bag ordinance? Or would they always have at least some percentage of their FTE, of their PD dedicated to code enforcement?
Another great question. I, I, trying to forecast is, it's really difficult. It's, it's a enforcement, it's a, unlike any that we do currently. So I'm, I was trying to think how this would play out down the road. I think the answer to your question would be, I would always anticipate some part of this person's position to be dedicated to the enforcement of this ordinance. Because at any given time, you can have a new business being violation. You can have some, you know, who knows what kind of reasons we would get complaints. So for sure, this, that, that person would be dedicated to that enforcement. And what percentage is, is really hard to say.
Okay. And not to diminish the possibility of having another FTE, because that is something to discuss, but in, and this may be a question for the Sustainability Advisory Board as well. When thinking through code enforcement or the enforcement of this ban, was it always the thought of the board to go with an FTE within the city? Or was there other suggestions that were brought up? Perhaps maybe this living within the Health Department because of the alignment to not only this being environmental, but also having a public health component to it? So I just didn't know if someone was there to answer, was it always the intent to, if there was an enforcement piece for it to live within the city? Or was there discussion about perhaps this living within the work of the Health Department?
I, I can answer that question. Kathy Richardson, Sustainability Director for the Sustainability Advisory Board, since I've been working closely with them. So for a very tiny, brief period, there was some conversation about the Sustainability Department potentially being the enforcement and the education piece and so forth. As you all are aware, the city of Lawrence has a Sustainability Department of one. So that idea, you know, just kind of progressed to the Sustainability Advisory Board really leaving it open to the city to figure out how we were going to do enforcement. They really left that section out. If you see their draft of this ordinance that they took a stab at early that we showed in, in, well, they showed back last year and it was linked to the agenda, it really left that enforcement piece blank, allowing the city to, to kind of discuss and figure out what we could do. So the best we could come up with was the Planning and Development Services Department being the enforcement group, but certainly open to other suggestions and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I want, I wanted to go back to a comment that was made about. Thank you, Kathy. I wanted to go back to a comment that was made about the 40% consumable plastics and that there were a couple of entities that already do, that already have implemented that, such as, I think I heard Sprouts, Walmart, pardon me, and Target. So as far as it relates to the ordinance, that kind of covers most of our grocery retailers. So is the idea, I guess my question is, is the idea that the ban would be the plastics and encouraging all retailers to move to that 40% post-consumable, not just grocery retailers, but also, you know, clothing retailers? Or I'm trying to make the balance between that additional comment, how it relates to the ordinance, since that piece is not in the proposed draft ordinance.
Commissioner Sellers, Nancy Muma, I can address that question. So I mentioned this because I wanted to let everybody know that those thicker bags that are allowable are available. Not that it would be required only of grocery stores, but that there are the Target and the CBS, that they already have them, they already use them, other people can purchase those as well and have access to them. So that was the reason I brought that up. It exists already.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess my question would be for Nancy, if we were to enact a ban, and let's say someone was utilizing, so they could still, let's say someone still had single-use plastic bags in their home, and they utilize those in their grocery store, would they be penalized? Or would the retailer be penalized for an individual utilizing any leftover single-use bags that they have?
So only the retailers would be penalized for distributing the single-use plastic bags. So if people have single-use plastic bags that they want to use over a couple times, usually they fall apart pretty quickly. But if they want to use them, there would be no penalty for you bringing your own bags and reusing them. The penalty would only be if the retailers would provide them inappropriately.
And then, question in regards to exemptions. I know there were the exemptions mentioned on produce bags. Were there any other exemptions that the board considered maybe as related to retailers or as far as maybe like chains versus non-chains, business size, business type? Were any of those considered, were any other considerations brought to the board about that?
So we didn't, so we're not suggesting that any retailers, regardless of their size, are exempt. The exemption was focused on safety. So we don't want fish or meat that would be put into a plastic bag for safety reasons be banned. Okay. But it's the bags that you put your purchase items in to remove from the store to your home. So those are the bags that we would suggest be banned, and that would be across the board regardless of the type of retailer. Did that answer your question?
It does.
Thank you.
I do have a few other items, but I'll save those for discussion. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yeah, a few questions. Is the recommendation on the 40% recycled content, to make that part of the improper use, so it'd be illegal? I mean, so could you be fined whatever the $100 for having a paper bag that wasn't 40%? Is that the intent to insert it in that section? Or do you insert it in a different section?
If it becomes a requirement, if we add that language as a requirement, then it would also be part of the process with a warning and the fee. I did also want to clarify and maybe give a little bit of context on this 40% post-consumer recycled content, is that there are some cities that have passed single-use plastic bag bans. And some of the retailers, you see what the definition of a single-use plastic bag is within that ordinance. And then they get a bag that's just a little bit thicker to be able to distribute at the checkout. So the 40% post-consumer recycled content, like Nancy mentioned, is just getting that plastic that already exists into making these new reusable thicker bags. I will also mention that some of the stores that have the 40% post-consumer recycled content are within their single-use plastic bags. This is not saying that if the single-use plastic bags are 40% post-consumer recycled content, that they will be okay. So just to clarify, no single-use plastic bags under 4 mil, regardless of recycled content, right? But what it's saying is that those are banned, and then what is distributed as the single-use paper bags or reusable plastic bags. So like Sprouts has a little bit thicker bag that is reusable. Their website says it can be used up to 125 times. So that is the type of bag that would, that the Sustainability Advisory Board would like to require the 40% post-consumer recycled content. Hopefully, that's not confusing.
It's a little confusing, but I assume we'd see it if it came back that way. Is that something that's easily identifiable by a code enforcement officer? Like, is it marked on the bag? Like, this is 40%. That's an easy...
The Sustainability Advisory Board, with the language of adding that 40% post-consumer recycled content, is saying that it would have to be printed on the bag as so. So the bags would be identified, which currently those grocery stores that Nancy mentioned do have, the bags have been printed on them that they have the 40% post-consumer recycled content. I'm thinking of some of those paper bags that have that from Target and some others.
Yeah, I guess I'm more concerned about the local restaurant downtown who wants to put their, you know, carryout into a paper bag. Is that something you, if you buy paper bags, or is it marked on the bag that they, they know what they're buying and they wouldn't get caught up in that? Or is that something you have to special order and special print? Or do you know?
I would not know the specifics of what's available for retail. I'm sure that if they go out and place a special order, they could get bags that are imprinted with that information on there. Without the information on there, it will be really hard to enforce the 40% post-consumer recycled content. Just looking at a bag without...
That was one of my concerns. Just curious, and maybe this is a question for Randy, maybe it's a question for you or the committee. I mean, we have a bunch of different ways we enforce ordinances. Some have 14-day warnings, some have abatements, some have 30-day warnings. Sometimes you can abate and not fine. I mean, this is a warning, but it doesn't have any time provision, doesn't have any, you know, 14 days to come into compliance, or 30 days like we do with a nuisance. It doesn't have any other provision besides a fining mechanism, where sometimes we have orders of abatement agreements, mediations. Was any of that discussed, like the different enforcement mechanisms, or how we might look at some of the other provisions of the code and use those in this?
I would defer that question to Randy with the enforcement side.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. When we were looking at this and how we were doing this, it was a little different than maybe a compliance situation in that, you know, if these are banned, and if they're using them, they're violating the law. So we give them a warning, and they should come into compliance immediately. That was the thought process as we went along. And, you know, we didn't see any point in giving them 30 days or something else like that regarding a zoning problem that might necessarily be intentional. And so that was the process, and that was the thought process going there. But, you know, it can be changed, it can be modified or amended, however the City Commission wants to do it. But that was a thought process regarding the warning.
Would you, if we added this 40% recycled content, would that change your thought about how it's as obvious that they're violating it and maybe have a different provision in there? To put you on the spot.
Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney, definitely could. Again, you know, I think it's cut and dry. It's either a single-use plastic bag, or it's 40% post-consumer usable product. And if it's not, then, you know, it's not. So they get the warning. So I think the concept behind the warning came from the Sustainability Advisory Board. They wanted to not punish them right away, but give a warning so that people could come into compliance before they get, start going down the path of having penalties. And so it could be done that way. I would say, you know, looking at it, maybe I wouldn't do it that way, but it's not my decision. It's up to the City Commission to decide how they want to do it. And it could definitely, we could put in a timeframe of coming to compliance or something of that nature if the City Commission wanted to do that.
While I am putting you on the spot, Randy, let me ask you, on the establishment, you know, the definition of establishment, I'm curious, you know, it talks about vendors of perishable and non-perishable items, the sale or distribution, and then it talks about vendors, retail and all that. I was trying to think of different places I've gotten plastic bags. What about a dentist who gives you your, you know, your toothbrush and your, what's that called, floss? Floss in a little bag that has a, you know, a little bag that has a, you know, a smiley little tooth on there. Is that, would that qualify as an establishment under this?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. No, would not. We thought about that, that particular thing. We also think about the newspapers being thrown on the driveways with plastic bags. Those are not covered by this ordinance.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions?
I have one quick question for the Sustainability Advisory Board. And discussing where, if we implement this, we're looking at a January 1, 24 effective date. Has there been discussion around supply, that transitioning, what, I guess what the fiscal impact would be for establishments as defined by this draft ordinance, to do a, you know, to transition to that? And has there been, ended the board, does it, has it prepared, or does it anticipate preparing any type of supports, recommendations to any type of, like a retail association as to how to go about transitioning to this if we were to pass this ordinance or move towards passing it?
So the Sustainability Advisory Board members spoke with and contacted a number of vendors in our area to find out whether or not the thicker plastic bags are available and whether or not the 40% post-consumer content bags are available. And the answer was yes, they're available. Many of them use it. There are many cities, and Washington State requires those to be used. And so they are available to retailers. And so it would not be a difficult transition for retailers in our city to do so as well.
Do we, one more.
Sorry.
One more question. As far as the identifiable piece of the special bags, I'm calling them special bags, is the best practice, is it the best practice to have something identifying? Because I guess my question is, you know, if I'm a retailer, I don't want to have to pay extra to put on the bag that it's 40% post-consumer. If it's 40%, it should already be on there. So I just, I didn't, are we assuming that that information is not on those bags and that a retailer would have to pay an additional cost to have it placed on there? Or is that information already designated on such bags?
So that information is currently on the bags that are used in the city and in Washington State, for instance, and other cities that use this requirement of 40% post-consumer recycled content. It's already printed on the bag. So it doesn't appear as if this would be an added requirement, something they would have to pay extra for, that it's already on there in both the paper and the plastic, the thicker plastic bags.
Got it. Okay. So that is all for now.
Commissioners, if I could just make a comment on enforcement, something came to my mind that maybe should be discussed.
Sure. Sure. Go ahead.
So just going to, so this is the way I would see this play out. So if we went to an establishment and they were in violation, we would give them a warning. Well, to follow up on that warning, we probably would have to go back for a reinspection to make sure they're compliant. We would just give them a warning and walk away. So perhaps it would be a good idea to identify a time period for compliance that would be established in the code. That way, we would go back after so many days, and then if they're still out of compliance, we would proceed to the, you know, going through the filing a complaint, so to speak.
Is that kind of what you were getting at, Commissioner? Okay.
All right. I think seems to be, would be reasonable. Are there any additional questions for staff on this one? Okay. Seeing as none, I'd go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Hyde. This is my first City Commission meeting ever, so bear with me. I don't really know what I'm doing. I just am kind of here to advocate for a plastic bag ban. I run the Sustainability and Refill Shop West downtown, so I'm already kind of committed to that. I think that as with any kind of change for anywhere, there's got to be a transition period for it. But ultimately, I think it's a good thing. Sorry, I had more to say. I think that I kind of had some questions on what resources might be provided in the same way for like businesses to make that transition. I also had ideas to maybe find some kind of like corporate sponsoring or partnering to host, you know, kind of reusable bag giveaways or something. I've had a lot of feedback about concerns about accessibility. So I think that's something to consider. But overall, I just think that our dependence on single-use plastic, especially in the form of plastic bags, they're just going to go from the store to home. We have an over-alliance of it and over-dependence of it. And it's something that's kind of a slight convenience, more as something that we think than a necessity. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joe Douglas. I'm really excited about this ordinance. It's been a long time coming. It's been a long process. And I really want to express my appreciation for the Sustainability Advisory Board and the city staff who have put an awful lot of really good work and thought into this. And I think they've come up with a really good ordinance. I think this will do the job, will make our community a much better place. And I think the only, I mean, there are some details that might be changed, but I think as long as the essence of the program stays the same, I think this is going to be something that we all are really going to be proud of. And I hope that Lawrence will stand as an example for other communities who maybe can follow our example and do the same. So thank you very much for pursuing this.
Hello, my name is Margaret Kremar. And my only comment would be to please implement this as soon as possible and not delay past January 1, 2024, because some of us have worked so hard in 2020, 2022, and 2023 at the legislature hard in 2020, 2022, and 2023 at the legislature to make sure that they did not pass the bill which said that municipalities cannot decide whether or not they're going to regulate something like this. So again, if this is delayed, if it's drawn out unnecessarily and unduly, there is a possibility that the Republican Legislature will get that bill passed and all of this work will have been for naught and go right down the drain. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Tad Kremar, and I strongly urge you to pass this proposed single-use plastic bag ordinance now. This has been studied and discussed for years, and there is no reason for further delay. Plastic bags, immense harm to the environment, global warming, public health, wildlife, and aesthetics is well summarized in the whereas clauses of the proposed ordinance. And a ban would actually benefit local merchants because they would no longer need to incur the expense of providing single-use plastic bags. Hopefully, more people would start bringing their own as a result of this. The Lawrence Journal World reported that Kroger announced it would transition to reusable bags by 2025. Aldi will do it by the end of this year, and the Merc eliminated single-use plastic bags in 2013. If these stores can do it, so can everyone else. Change takes some effort and leadership and is not the easy way out, but we must not let this paralyze us into inaction. Let's stop talking and make Lawrence a leader in achieving this highly beneficial change. Please approve the proposed single-use plastic bag ordinance now. Thank you.
I'm Chris Flowers. Okay, when it comes to the cost, this, the talk about the cost of enforcement got me to thinking about when you all took away the body autonomy of 18- to 21-year-olds by raising the smoking age to 21. And that didn't cost the city anything because when it came to that, you, you passed the cost on to the smoke shops. So why is it, when it comes to smoking, you can make the smoke shops pay for that, but when it comes to grocery stores, you want the taxpayers to pay for it? But I'm not, I'm not here to bitch, but I'm just thinking, what if we quit enforcing the 18- to 21-year-old, like, the smoking ban on that, and we use the, like, we use those resources to go after the plastic bag ban instead? Also, when it comes to this plastic bag ban, I don't think it's going to be, there's, there's not going to be much need for enforcement five to 10 years from now, I don't think. You could easily just say, hey, we're, we'll hold off on this 18- to 21-year enforcement, and we'll pick it up once we don't need to be doing the plastic bag enforcement as much. Also, other ideas I had, we are talking about adding another code enforcer. Why not add another sustainability employee and put that under, because also, we got to be thinking, hey, we're probably not going to need as much enforcement years from now, but we probably will need a sustainability employee that could be doing other stuff, like, when it comes to sustainability. And when we talk about enforcement, I'd like to think, well, at some point, maybe we can restructure the police and not have them looking, going out for noise ordinance complaints and have that on the ordinance department, you know? So if we're going to add someone for enforcement, well, why don't we hold off on that until we're, and do it with restructuring the police, but we're adding an employee for this, let's do it with the sustainability and have that person do the enforcement for bags right now. But really, I think we should be, if it was up to me, and I like to say I am running for commission, if I was sitting up there, I'd be doing away with whatever enforcement we're doing with the 18- to 21-year-olds of smoking ban, and I'd put that, that, all that resource into the plastic bag ban. Thank you.
Is there any more comment here in the room?
I'm Michael Allman again. I'm with Sustainability Action Network. As Crosby, Stills, Nash sang and as Joe Douglas just said, it's been a long time coming, longer than many people might even realize, actually. It was in 2011 when Terri Wilkie initiated this whole thing, before she was a member of Sustainability Action Network. And at that time, the Sustainability Director deemed it not important enough to take on. So it wasn't until 2015 when Terri brought it up again, and the Sustainability Advisory Board then took it on, as well as the Kennedy School kids. A data point, though, to add to what Nancy and Kathy mentioned earlier, plastics industry overall account for about 16% of global climate emissions. So just that, add that to the equation, aside from all the, the plastic garbage patch in the ocean and everything else. This is a climate issue. As far as the employee for enforcement goes, if it's going to be like pretty much everything else that's done in the city, I think Mr. Jimenez or Mr. Owens could verify that a very large part of our enforcement efforts are on complaint basis. Most of, you know, the, the code enforcement isn't from officers making rounds and checking up on people and, and coming back again and again. Initially, in the first year or so, they probably will, but, you know, are they going to be going to every restaurant every month, every whatever? You know, it's, it's going to, you know, it'll take on whatever form it takes. But over time, that's going to drop off, and it's going to be on a complaint basis. So I would keep that in mind. Likewise, enforcement staff in general, right now, as, as much of the rest of the staff of the city is grossly understaffed. They have way more than they can do, so adding two-thirds of a full-time employee to that, if nothing else, is an advantage. Finally, I've been using recycle reusable bag for years and years, two different kinds. This is a cloth, and I request that most people get cloth. The whole idea is to reduce the use of plastic, so I say yes to this ordinance, cloth bag. I also use a rip-stop nylon bag that I keep in your pocket, but it's a big bag, and it's lasted some 25 years.
Time.
So thank you for doing this.
Ted Holgham, moderator for lettuce, Lawrence Ecology Teams, United Sustainability. What a relief it will be for the commission not to have me come up here all these years. It started about four and a half years ago, and I heard about this from a woman who was in one of the green teams of the nine different faith communities that lettuce represents and interfaith group. And she said, you know, plastic needs to be addressed in this city. And we discussed it, and we said, well, that's something lettuce can do. And we went to lettuce, and the other faith community said, yes, we need to go and to educate ourselves, et cetera. Well, the next week, I get a phone call from Kennedy Elementary School. The fourth-grade teacher says, would you come, please, and listen to the class that went to the City Commission with, I believe, a five-minute film about plastic in the ocean? And the City Commission listened to them and responded affirmatively. Well, you know, fortunately, I think those students who are in the fourth grade are going to see an ordinance before they graduate from high school. That's an accomplishment. I really think it is. I know it's been hard work. I do know that also that we as faith communities, and I think we represent approximately over 2,000 different memberships, but we really want to advocate and will educate and ask people, you know, find ways for people to get their bags if we need to, while we can subsidize that. But I think, as the woman before mentioned, I think some organizations need to educate and to make available these bags to people that might also feel like, oh, I can't get one, and we can help that happen. So I just thank you. I appreciate, I celebrate. I'll probably be seeing you again on a different issue, but this is a good one to at least tentatively conclude. Thank you.
Is that all the public comment in the room? Terri Wilkie?
Thank you. So I want to point out that in the fall of last year, the federal government passed the Inflation Reduction Act, and that provides $391 billion available to governments, including state and city and local governments. You do not have to have a tax liability to apply for these funds. Is it easy to apply for these funds? No. Is it time for the City of Lawrence to put an FTE or a full-time employee in place to learn how to apply for some of the Inflation Reduction Act funding for our environmental well-being? Yes. Can we do it? I think we can. And I'm glad to hear that we're going to start on waste, which is a huge problem of ours. Thank you very much.
Kaye Johnson?
My name is Kaye Johnson, and I am a member of the Lawrence Sustainability Advisory Board, and I fully support the single-use plastic bag ban that we've discussed for many years now. So we really hope that the city commissioners can get behind this and request staff to give them a final ordinance so that can be voted on. And I also would like to point out, and I have a, I don't know if you can see this or not, but this is a paper bag, and it is printed with the 40% post-consumer waste symbol on it. The largest of the grocery stores do this now, and I've seen them on some of the very smaller ones, too. So that is also a good consideration for this ordinance. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration on this.
William Steele?
Just tell them you take it.
All right. Sorry, I forgot to unmute there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just want to quickly echo what others have said. I also support the ban on single-use plastics. The last time I faced the commission about this issue, I brought my own reusable shopping bag, which I've been using now for more than 15 years. It's got a few stains on it, but, you know, it's held up pretty, pretty well. But I, I brought it to demonstrate the impact that, you know, just one of these bags can have on the environment. You know, I estimated that I saved probably 2,500 bags from the landfill. You know, I just went shopping this morning, brought this bag, and probably saved, you know, another two or three bags from the landfill. Look, we all know that the environmental harm done by single-use plastics far outweighs their benefits, which really are mainly of convenience. And convenience is just not enough justification anymore to continue their use, because the cost of this convenience is something that we as taxpayers and stewards of the environment, and we're all stewards of the environment, whether we realize it or not, we're all paying for it in one way or another. So please approve this ban. As Nancy said, it's an, it's an easy pivot to make to go to reusable bags. When I lived in Eugene, Oregon, they issued a single-use ban on plastic bags. It's now a statewide ban. And, and I can tell you that the transition was very smooth. People just changed their daily habits. I don't recall any issues with enforcements, with enforcement. People just, you know, they just brought their, their own bags when they went shopping. It was not a big deal. There's a movement to eliminate these plastics, and Lawrence should really join this movement, movement, and they should join it now. And that's all I have to say.
That's all the public comment.
All right. All right, and bring it back to the commission for discussion. I had a quick one, if I can jump in real quick, of staff, just from someone, one of the public commenters. Is there any plan in place for, I know it's going to be about six months if we were to progress this further, is there any plan in place for any sort of education on both the retail and consumer side in regards to this?
This is Kathy Richardson, the City Sustainability Director. So if the commission were to move this ordinance forward and vote on it, I would say that, and I know this question was asked a little bit before for Nancy, we were estimating that timeframe of about six months notice to the establishments, but certainly, we would have some information and educational material for all those impacted. So certainly, that is part of the plan if this is to move forward.
I had a couple of questions that, one I forgot to ask, one that popped up. And Randy, this is probably for you again. I asked-
Commissioner Finkel, if you don't mind me saying, I noticed that Commissioner Sellers had her hand up.
Oh, okay.
That's my question. If you can go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Finkel.
Oh, well, thank you. Randy, this might be a question for you, too.
Yep.
I'm a lawyer, by the way, so I ask these sorts of questions. We talked about, like, the dentist example, but I'm thinking then, like, we have schools and we have religious institutions on the list of establishments. So like, if, if a Sunday school teacher or a kindergarten teacher gave out, you know, a few things in a bag on a Sunday morning or on a Monday afternoon to send a project home with their kids, that would be, they're listed in there, so that would be barred. But the dentist, wouldn't it be barred? Were you thinking, when it says schools and religious institutions and governmental institutions, only if they're selling them? Well, but it says sale or distribution. So would the Sunday school teacher or the kindergarten teacher be in trouble for distributing something?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. I don't believe that was the intent of this, so that may need some fine tuning before it comes back to you. So that's, that's an excellent point, excellent discussion.
And then I, actually, someone asked me to ask this question. So you have the produce bag effect, which is, I think, you know, you're inside Dylan's and you pick up some food and you put it in a bag, and then you take it to the front, and then they put it in a non-reusable bag. But if you're at the farmer's market and you are buying a thing of lettuce and they put it in a produce bag, do you still get the exception, even though that is a point of sale? Under the establishment, it's considered a point of sale because you're not, the produce bag exception says, only if you're transporting within the establishment to a point of sale. Would that, because it's at the point of sale, could they not do that at a farmer's market? But they could within Dylan's?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. What that's, to keep, purpose of the produce bag or the product bag is to keep things from contaminating each other. So if that's going to be the case, you know, you might be at the farmer's market and you might buy a chicken, and you might buy lettuce, and you might buy tomatoes, and very well might produce bag. I would guess that the point of entry or the point of sale, point of transaction would be as you leave the place. So if you had, you know, a produce bag, you know, with those things in it, you can place it into a reusable bag and then leave the premises and keep everything safe.
Okay.
And I think that's, I think that's the goal of everything, is to make sure that, you know, the health, safety- health, safety, welfare is protected.
So we would think of the entire establishment as the farmer's market, not, not that? Okay. Thank you for those two questions.
This is Commissioner Sellers. So Randy, to the point that Commissioner Finkel made about schools and religious institutions, where if a teacher was to give a student something, would this ordinance cover a church that perhaps has a cafe and a sell items? And are they, if they were to bag those items up at point of sale, then the items that which the, if the items they purchased were placed in a bag, those bags would need to be PCRC? Post-consumer recyclable? I don't want to say because I get tongue-tied, tongueless, but would that be an example of? Because I, I know we're splitting hairs here, but I, I see what Commissioner Finkel is saying, that there's an unintended public, you know, there may be a population here that's affected. But I mean, some of your larger churches do have cafes or shops that have bookstores or have items that you can purchase. So is it the assumption that these?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. The intent was a book sale, a bake sale, other places that have maybe things for sale, maybe they have a yard sale, some things of that nature. It was not intended basically for a teacher and schoolchildren. So we'll need to revisit this section and, and fine tune that definition some.
Okay. Couple of questions. This is maybe Kathy for Kathy Bryan or SAB. Based on the definition of establishments, what would that put, what would that number be in the city? How many establishments do we have? What is that quantity?
I don't know if Jeff or Brian on Zoom could help with that question.
Brian Jimenez, Assistant Co-Official for Planning Development Services. I, I don't have that answer. Perhaps Jeff could give a bone call based on census information.
My cricketer.
Commissioner Sellers, I don't have it off the top of my head because we don't have a business licensing program. So it's hard to track which businesses are going and which businesses are closing out. I know when we do the retail market survey, we've got in the neighborhood of a few thousand spots that we look at. That's only in certain zoning districts. My hunch would be is it's probably 1,000, 2,000 potentially, just kind of working off the top of my head very quickly.
Okay, thank you for that. So then that leads into my next question. If we were to bring this on board, what does, what does the compliance mechanism look like? Are we creating a registry? How do we recognize new businesses that come in and that identify as an establishment? How do, what is the mechanism to add them to the registry to ensure that they are compliant? What would that look like? I'm getting, I know I'm putting the cart before the horse, but this is valuable information to me.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. I, we're not going to establish a registry. If they are in the business of selling goods, selling goods, whether it's perishables or other goods, and they're using single-use plastic bags, and we get a report of that, then we will investigate to determine whether they're in compliance or not, and whether they're an establishment or not. You know, it might be a one-off deal, like a teacher handing out treats or something. That might not qualify, but if it's a business that's, that's selling food or other types of goods, then we would, we would look at it and make that decision on a case-by-case basis.
But that less of initial compliance would be created by us then to, without a registry? Or it's just, so I mean, I'm trying to understand what we're enforcing if we don't have a list of?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. We have a number of laws where we don't have licenses. We're not intending to license businesses.
Right.
If they're in the business of selling products or produce, and people leave the point of the store with single-use plastic bags, that would be against the ordinance. And then we would investigate to determine whether they're in compliance or not. If they're in compliance, then, you know, nothing will happen. And if they're not, then there'll be no warning and then, then move on down the chain. So it's, it's really no difference than, you know, noise ordinance, this sort of thing. We'll just investigate as complaints come in.
Excellent. Okay.
Any further discussion on?
I, I guess I would say a few things. I would like to see, you know, in a final ordinance, the, you know, the redefinition of the establishment. I think maybe if you just limited it to people who are selling things and took out distribution, that might solve some of that issues, like, you know, when the church is selling something or a school is selling something, that's different than distributing something. Anyway, something to look at. I also think we need the warning to have a, a look, a lookback period of 14 days, or 10 days, or 14 days, you know. One, again, I'm not worried about, you know, the, you know, if whether or not Dylan's is going to comply with this. We don't need an enforcement officer to figure that out. I mean, they're going to comply. I mean, the question is, is going to be some small business who, you know, doesn't regularly do this? And then, you know, they, you know, they're a business and, and all of a sudden, they hand something out or they sell something and they think it's a produce bag, or they think there's an exception, or they think that, you know, or they didn't even know about it, you know. And then they get in trouble. I think we need at least a 14-day lookback, you know, warning with a, with a response. And again, maybe if we're clarifying the farmer's market question, maybe there's a way to do that a little better. I mean, I don't, someone who goes to the farmer's market was confused about whether or not what they did is a produce bag, because they sell produce, or if it was a single, you know, they were an establishment because they sell things, but they put them in a plastic bag. They weren't clear whether or not this applied to them or not. So maybe some sort of clarification on that would be good as well. And again, I don't, I don't imagine that enforcement's going to be the big problem on this, but, and I don't necessarily want to overcomplicate it. But, you know, in the nuisance provision and in, and in a couple of other provisions in our code, you know, we have exceptions that allow the municipal judge to waive fines if certain things are met. And, you know, they, you know, we have up to $100, but, you know, this is subject to a fine of $100. So it's unclear to me, I assume the judge could not waive that in a particular situation, as opposed to saying up to $100, up to $200, or if there's extenuating circumstances to allow that. I mean, clearly, the goal here is not to, you know, to fine. It's, it's to bring people into compliance, and we certainly have to have something there. But I'd be interested in looking at that. And lastly, I'd say, I'm not, well, two things I'd say. I'm not 100% sure I'll vote for this, but I, I am, I, I really need to see this 40% recycle bag, how it fit into this ordinance and where it fell, and know a little bit more about that, if I was going to put that into the ordinance. Those are my thoughts.
To piggyback on that or to clarify that, I wonder, I, I know there was rather a lot of research that went into this by the Sustainability Committee during COVID, when there were supply chain issues. And does anyone who did that research know if some of those supply chain issues have resolved themselves recently? At that time, you know, there was maybe a consideration of, okay, in six months, we're going to do this, or? What, and, and then kind of a follow-up for Brian, 14 days actually doesn't sound like very long for you or for them. What, is that unrealistic? Is 14 days unrealistic, just in terms of administrative work and follow-up?
Brian Jimenez, Co-Official, Assistant Director of Planning Development Services. That, that's a typical, you know, that's, sometimes we get longer depending on the type of code violation. I think, I think the question, you know, that we should ask ourselves is, is we can get back sooner than that. I mean, we're, we're visiting, there's a violation, we issue a warning. I, I would envision us on that warning document submitting a reinspection date for us to come back to give the establishment of fair and clear, you know, direction on what we expect. I, I, I think that's reasonable if we want to, you know, if we want people to still be able to use them for, you know, quote, 13 days, and on the 14th day, they have to comply. Yeah, we can do that. I was actually thinking a little bit sooner than that, to be honest, but at 14 is where you want to land. That would, that would be doable for us.
Brian, were you thinking more along the lines of like 72 hours? What were you thinking?
I was, well, I was just thinking how many plastic bags that on violation could go through the checkout lanes or point of sale in 14 days? That'd be quite a few. I, I would say, to piggyback on what Randy said earlier in the conversation about them being a ban, therefore they're, they're at, you know, they're again, are in violation of our ordinance. I would say probably five business days, something like that, five to seven business days, to cut down that time period where, you know, that, that should be able to give them a reasonable amount of time to comply. That was my thinking.
I wanted to address Commissioner Shipley's question about the supply chain issues. None of the vendors that we spoke to mentioned any issues with the supply chain.
Commissioner Sellers? Would you have anything?
Yes, so just a couple of things. One, I'm glad that we're, I, I think we've made some headway with this, with the potential of a draft ordinance to come in front of us for a vote. I know when we started this, I had my concerns about what a fee base would look like as opposed to a ban, and wanted to challenge the advisory board to give us something. I, I think we talked through it enough of what I didn't like, if it was a fee base, what I wouldn't be comfortable with if it was a single plastic bag ban. And I think we're, we're getting there. And now that we have something in front of us, it's continued to, it give us, it's giving us additional items that you want to bring us back, what could possibly be an ordinance that could pass. I will say to the, echo the sentiments that were shared earlier this evening, as well as in discussion, that adding the language around the 40% post-consumer recycle content, boom, I wrote it down this time so I could say it, definitely needs to be added to it. I do echo the sentiments of Commissioner Finkel in regards to the fines and fees. Just in work that I've done and looking at usually that up to or, you know, does give, what it really gives the agency, and in this case, it gives the court, reason to say that we can. It could be this much. It may not be this much. So I don't think it's playing mind games or anything with retailers. It's just saying that there is a little bit of grace and mercy that could be attached to this, and that's at the discretion of the judge. And so adding that up to language, I think, I mean, that would give me, wouldn't give me so much heartburn to have that. I will say, when I saw this with the enforcement component, I saw that as policing by another name. That gives me pause for concern. If we need another FTE code enforcement for our planning and development services, then let's say we need an FTE for that. I'm glad we can kill two birds with one stone with this, if we have to. If a, if a component is not to utilize the Health Department as an academic institution to, of public health to do this, I get it. But I also want us to be very transparent that, you know, based on what has been explained to me, that one-third may not be one-third. So if we're, if this is another way of us getting an FTE to help with code enforcement in other areas, then let's call that what it is. And the value add is that if we bring a single plastic ban ordinance onboard, that we will be utilizing an FTE within planning, within code enforcement to offset that. So we will be using current staff to absorb it. We're not using current staff, but I think we're just, it's a little bit of a word play. And I, and I don't want to see this as policing. That's the last thing I want this to be. So just wanted to put that there. I think what we uncovered tonight and having, having the conversation about the 40% PCRC bags is that where, from an educational component, this is not a ban. But better yet, this is moving us in direct of choice of more environmentally conscious products. And I know that's a play on words, but it is what it is. It's moving us slowly in a direction where people may not be fully ready to get on board with this. And so it's not a complete plastic, like, we're not eradicating plastic bags from our community. We're moving to a more environmentally responsible product, paper and plastic, in addition to cloth, nylon, and all the others. It's creating choice so that people can make smart, economic, and environmental choices based on where they are. So we're meeting the consumer, the community member, the constituent halfway. I think that's going to be important to how we share this with our community, and that it's bigger than a ban. It's moving us towards being more environmentally cautious and aware to make decisions and making good decisions based on where we are. So just wanted to, to put that in, because I, we, we, we've talked a lot about ban and enforcement, and that gives me heartburn. And we're not talking about the good, smart things that we, that we're doing with this, which is helping people make better environmental choices about, you know, that not only will protect our environment, but protect our community, but also help create better practices in their shopping or things of that nature. So wanted to make sure we push that. With all of this, preemption will always exist. And I'm, I'm not trying to jinx us. I think for some of us that have lived in the Kansas Legislature, we know, it, it, we live in the dystopia that it can be in, and it has been the last few years, is that we as, as local electeds stand firm in protecting our right to home rule. And that I think in educating individuals that this is bigger than a ban, I'm not saying it, it takes us out of the target zone, but hopefully, it will educate those misinformed and disinformed legislators that what we're, we're not, not to take something away from us that we know how to do. So Wichita may not be ready for this, Johnson County may not be ready for this, Salina may not be ready for this, Nima Hah County may not be ready for this, but Lawrence is. And so the idea that us doing this now covers us from any type of preemption, that's just not true. But I think the way we message this and the way we roll this out to the community hopefully mitigates any type of preemption grab that we would see from, from Topeka, from our, our state folks in Topeka. So I just want to push on that. So yeah, I think if we can add the 40% post-consumer recycle content, change the language in the fines, and recognizing that, I, I think we may be close to something that I could, I could agree on. As far as the point about the tobacco piece that Mr. Flowers brought up, I did just want to make a note to say that HB 2269 passed in April. So we're not banning cigarettes from anyone. That's federal law, and now it's state law, that you have to be 21 in this state to purchase tobacco products. And so our tobacco retail license ensures that our retailers are not skimping on their state statute requirements, as well as their local requirement. So. as their local requirement. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I would agree with all of the, the 40% fines and fees. And also nailing down the further definition of an establishment and distribution, I think would be helpful to what Commissioner Finkelde pointed out earlier. But yeah, I, I think this provides us a great opportunity to provide more education on the retail and consumer side up until if, if we decide to proceed with it, the inaction of it. So, but yeah. Anything else?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I would like those things to be, the selling versus distributing and the 14 days or the five to seven days, whichever staff thinks is reasonable, or whatever I can get Commissioner Finkelde on. I would like the most amount of consensus on this that, that I could get. I would like to see that. And I, I do kind of want to clarify something too. While I am totally fine with adding an FTE for this and for any extra work that this doesn't generate, that they use that work elsewhere, that's efficiency to me. Also, just because we passed this ordinance, doesn't mean that that's going to actually happen in our budget. It means that's what staff recommended. Do you agree with that statement?
Yeah, I do agree with that statement. We have a lot, a lot of work in the budget.
Right.
A lot of priorities we're going to need to balance out. So, and this, this is one way to, to do this. There may be others.
Right. And, and also, no, yeah. And also saying that to Brian, I would say, I have been watching your comments for many years on long-term rentals and short-term rentals. And as diplomatically as you have been saying it, I have been hearing you say that you need more help, and I know that that's true. That's not exactly the conversation we're having today, but I see you and I hear you. So with that, with those changes, it sounds like we have a lot of consensus on. I would absolutely vote for this. If, if that could come to us at our next meeting, I would be thrilled.
All right. Craig, do you have what you need?
You feel like we do?
Is that more of a question for Randy?
Oh, yeah, I guess. Randy, do you have what you need?
Mr. Randy Larkin, Deputy City, yes, Commissioners. We have been in excellent direction. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. So we can, we can look forward to see that on consent. That gives us, gives you time, right?
If you want it back for the, what is it, the June 20th meeting, we'll have it ready for the June 20th meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so on, that's doable. Good deal. All right. Moving on to number two. Consider agreeing to the recommended financing model, financing model for the emergency communication center as outlined, the emergency communication service assessment, bring report and authorize staff to prepare the appropriate agreements. What do we have for this?
I'll, I'll take this one, Vice Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Casey Toomey. I serve as an Assistant City Manager. As you all know, we've been in the process of reviewing a number of longstanding joint funding agreements between the city and Douglas County. Tonight, we will be discussing one of those, which is our agreement for the emergency communication center, which provides consolidated 911 dispatch services for the city of Lawrence, Baldwin City, Udora, and Douglas County. Joining us on our Zoom tonight is Misty Bruckner, the Director of the Public Policy and Management Center at Wichita State University. Over the past few months, Misty and her team have worked with representatives from all of the cities and county to assess the current services and agreement and to come back with some recommendations, including an alter, excuse me, an alternative funding model for the ECC. She is here with the final report, and she's going to walk you all through those recommendations, including the recommended funding model. If that recommended funding model is agreed to by all of the parties, it would be used to craft the city's 2024 budget for ECC services. So I will ask Misty to go ahead and pull up her presentation and turn it over to her.
Thank you, Casey. Appreciate that. Casey, I cannot share my screen.
Just one moment, Misty. Okay, you should be good now.
Did you hear that, Misty? You should be able to now.
I did. Hopefully you all can see that.
We can.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody. Misty Bruckner, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and with the Public Policy and Management Center. And as Casey said, we've been working on this with a host of folks on a leadership team to pull this together. Aside from my team at the Public Policy and Management Center, we also have content expert help from a chief that assisted with this, who he has content knowledge expert in helping us work through this. So just a little background on the current agreement. The county consolidated their emergency communication department was established in 1994. At that time, it was a split cost with 34% coming from the county and 66% coming from the city of Lawrence. They had established an advisory committee and identified members to be a part of that. In 2015, the city of Udora was brought into that agreement. They pay $25,000 a calendar year, and they have one seat on the advisory committee. And then Baldwin City does not have a formal agreement, and they pay $20,000 a calendar year for use of the ECC services. So when we started this project, we pulled together a leadership team. Casey has represented your community well, and also the atmosphere of being cooperative and pulling this work together has been critical for that success. And so Baldwin City and Udora, as well as ECC rep and representatives from Douglas County have been a part of that, as well as folks that are involved with public safety to make sure that we have that content expertise in, in working through this. Just a little bit about the volume. So the information up here gives you a background on law, as well as fire and EMS calls for totality. It also gives you an idea on the number of priority or high priority calls and how those are responded to within the 90th percentile processing goal. And so you can see, for the most part, the law enforcement and fire type of calls are answered close to that performance goal. And we'll talk more about that as a part of the, the efforts to move this forward and continue to improve upon this process. And the chart below just provides you an idea on those types of, of volume by month across the board. We did 14 stakeholder interviews and focus groups in November and December. Part of our belief is to engage those that are impacted by the work. And so we sat in with a group of 14 different folks and did interviews or focus groups to hear back from them with consistent questions to see what was going well, what could be improved upon, and following provides an overview of those findings. So what was going well consistently, we heard about the leadership of the ECC, the dispatch quality that the folks receive that are using, utilizing those services, and that the consolidated dispatch was a model that they wanted to continue. Challenges that we heard from them were concerns about partner equity, especially on the, on the funding piece of this. This is a technology-driven effort, and there are ongoing challenges with changes in technology, as well as cost of technology to put those in. So that leads to the next one on, on budget and billing. Opportunities for improvement, resource management, how those funds are used, how care of human resources and use of staffing as a part of that. Dispatch care, this is an intense field, as you all know, as a part of the public safety spectrum, and care of the dispatchers was something that, that all stakeholder groups discussed. And then just continuing to make this a county-wide operation was efforts for improvement for that were identified. We talked to them specifically about communication. All stakeholders, interviews and feedback sessions indicated that they felt this was an area that has overall going well and has continued to improve. One of the things they talked about, an area for improvement, is it's largely reactive and problem-based, and hoping that with some new governance structure, that it can be more formalized, but also move into more proactive work for the future. Financial structure, depending on what you are paying, there were varied opinions of the legacy and of those agreements. There were equity concerns that were posed, and the need for half-regular review of the financial model was discussed. The governance structure, they, there was some confusion even among stakeholders that are pretty active about the role of the 911 advisory board versus the regular chiefs meetings that happen. There was concern expressed that there's a pretty high turnover or inconsistency on who's represented on the 911 advisory board and how that impacts decision-making. And then just some equity concerns about who's represented in that effort. So that was the feedback we received. We also did work on best practices across the country, as well as looking at models that are here in Kansas but elsewhere on how to move this work forward. Two primary areas that we focused on was the governance and then financials, and then I'll touch just a little bit on operation recommendations at the end here. So for governance, the, the current structure, just as a reminder, all ECC employees are Douglas County employees. The director is supervised by the sheriff, but also meets regularly with the county administrator and is involved with that annual performance evaluation. The 911 advisory board was established, as I mentioned, when the center was created. It meets quarterly to share updates. Attendance is, is pretty, can be inconsistent, so that's a part of the concern. The other thing that we wanted to make sure that we lift up, that part of the things that people appreciate about the work that's done at the emergency communication center is the agileness of the work. So participants discuss if they run into an issue, they feel comfortable contacting the director, they can work out a solution, and they, they can move on with that. One of the things we don't want to do is to create bureaucratic processes that slows down the efficiency of the work or the agileness to respond in time. So we took that into consideration when we, we thought about the governance structure. What we are recommending is to restructure the existing 911 board, to get a focus on actual governance, looking at issues regarding policy, service, performance, focusing on budgeting and financial concerns, overall performance of the effort of the entire system. We would recommend establishing regular meetings that focuses on planning for the future, reviewing current performance standards, and that those would be at the, at the high level of an executive manager or their designee, and that that would be representatives of the city of Lawrence, of Douglas County, city of Udora, Baldwin City, and because University of Kansas serves as a backup system for the ECC, that they would be involved at those meetings, that is an ex officio member for the system. We think it's important that you establish performance measures to define expectations and accountability, and that the ECC director would be writing regular updates on that. Much like we have talked about in, in other efforts, that this has not been reviewed, this contract has not been reviewed very often. And so having that every three years that this be looked at, we think keeps everybody current and addressing issues in time. The voting recommendation was something we delved into a little bit. We want to make sure to emphasize that consensus is what has made success already of this work, and that that is the intent going forward, is to try to reach consensus as often as possible. But if not, we recommend, because Lawrence, the, the funding that they provide for this, that they would have veto power, that Douglas County would, and that Baldwin City and Udora would have collective veto power, just in case they would both vote in the negative. In the report, we spell out several steps that could be taken after that. Again, the framework is the idea that you're trying to reach consensus and be successful with that. The governing body would also have responsibilities for providing guidance on long-term issues. This is an evolving field with technology, and so really important to be thinking about that system approach for the future. And also, Douglas County would maintain hiring authority of the director, but we think that all members should have representation in the selection of that leadership position. Financial model. We looked at different funding formulas that were considered and brought forward to the leadership team. We put through some guiding principles that we wanted to help shape this decision. We wanted it to be understandable and replicable. We wanted it to think about the equity among the partners. We also wanted it to be something that could be implemented and could be, be acceptable to do that. And we want it to be considerate of all expenses. So while we're focusing, sorry, while we are focusing on operations, this also would apply in thinking about capital expenses in the future. So the current financial model, you can see here that of a budget of about 3.1 million, Lawrence pays 1.9. That's about a 61.75%. Because Baldwin City and, and Udora pay a very small percentage, it's less than 1% the day, the day pay right now. We look at several funding options. We looked at doing it just by population, population plus a county base, which I'll come back to, average call volume, assessed value, and then the total budget. The average call volume, I would say when we went into this, we thought that that would have a lot of promise. As we worked with folks that are in the business, whether that's from emergency communication center, but with law enforcement folks, there's a lot of challenges on using average call volume because, due to length of calls, complexity of the calls, how calls are used within the radio system. There was not a lot of support to move forward that as something that would be an easily deployed model. So we came back to option two, which is the idea that the county has a commitment to do this work so that they would provide a base funding on the idea that they would have to, that they would provide this service for the general county. So it's about a third of the cost that they were, they were going to staff at that level. And then the remaining percentage would be divided among the cities that are involved in this. The 11% of unincorporated is considered as a part of the base of what the county is paying. So with that effort, looking at how that aligns operational expenses, it puts the amount for Baldwin City and Udora somewhere. Baldwin City is about 3%, Udora's 3.67%. It changes the percentage for the city of Lawrence, lowers that, but it also, because of past agreements, adds on that administration fee. So that the cost changes, goes up for that, just for that effort to, to move the administrative, having the administrative put, administration fee tacked on to, to that amount. So we think it's aligned operational expenses across all partners. It's easily reviewed, and it can be adjusted as population changes occur. This is a people-driven service, and so we think that having population in there is important for this. This is, as you can imagine, a pretty big increase for Baldwin City and Udora, so recommending an opportunity to phase this in over the next few years. These numbers are based on 2022 actual costs. So just want to make sure that we highlight that these costs will, will increase, that there will be a percentage increase for these. So these are not hard dollar numbers, but give an idea of what that can look like as a percentage increase over time for what they would be paying. Lastly, I'll just hit quickly on operational recommendations. These really are things, I think as the governing body moves forward, things that they should have on their plate of consideration about how to continue to make emergency communications center the best it can be. Part of that is automated dispatching and looking what is available and best practices for especially for fire and EMS services. The communication center building, both the, the current facility and the backup plan, there's some opportunities to look at that for the future to ensure services to the community are not impacted in case of something that would happen to either of those facilities. There is accreditation models that are out there. There is accreditation models that are out there, and think that that's important, that that be moved forward as a part of best practices, as well as just professionalism of the work that is done. It helps to create some of those performance measures for the organization that then partner organizations can look to. Emergency and police dispatching programs, again, is just another way to continue of a best practice that can be implemented for them, and there's already the pieces of that in place with how they do dispatching now. Post-incident analysis is another opportunity to look at how services are provided to the community, at opportunities for improvement in the future. Technology, as I've mentioned a few times, this is critical for this work, and so dedicated resources are recommended for the ECC in the future, as well as continuing to look at staffing levels, and then some technical things with dispatch consoles that can be improved, and using traffic cameras and ancillary technology that can hook in directly into the system. So there's a lot more in the report about the operational recommendations that I know those within the service area and emergency services can share more about the importance of doing that work. So that is the end of my presentation, and I'm glad to answer questions or any more of the other explanations that I can provide.
Okay. Thank you, Misty. Go ahead and bring it back to the commission. Any questions?
I know this was presented to the county. Has it been presented to Baldwin and Udora yet?
Yes, sir, it has been presented at both.
And generally, they have the biggest hit. I mean, how was it received?
Well, nobody ever wants to pay more, right? But I think they had been engaged from the beginning with the leadership team. They, there was great work to let them see how this was coming, and I think they know they've received services in the past at a pretty low rate. So they received the report, were working through the budget processes, and managers and staff there were doing a great job to help them with that.
This, on the hiring of the leadership, it says Douglas County has hiring authority, but representation of all, is that how we do the police chief? We have hiring, I mean, excuse me, our police, fire chief? We have hiring authority with participation? Is that the same language?
I don't believe that participation is mandated by any agreement, but certainly that's been our practice and would be our practice.
But even though the county participates, I was just trying to remember how we did that county agreement on the fire medical, if this was the same.
Misty may remember.
I know it was our recommendation that that be included as a part of that, as an effort to keep everybody engaged with it.
Oh, I think it is included in the recent agreement.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, yeah, okay.
Okay. Any further questions, Commissioner Freepley?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Sellers?
I just have one quick question. It might be a bit silly. With the option for the county paying the one-third base, and us paying, us, Udora, and Baldwin paying based on population, is there a reason why the administrative fee could not have been a blanket fee split between the three of us? Or, and why was it that there was a 10% administrative fee attached to each one of us individually?
Good question. What we started as kind of precedent with Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical was the idea that agreements going forward, because Douglas County doesn't do the internal administrative work as City of Lawrence does, that we would use that 10% as a way to ensure that that was included. So that's what we did with Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical, and then we did it as a part of this. And because Udora and Baldwin City are not as a part of that, they are included in the county with the fire medical because this is a separate agreement, we wanted to make sure that they also were paying into that administrative piece as well.
Any further questions? Commissioner Shapley, did you have any questions? Okay. Making sure. All right. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment.
There's no public comment.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and bring it back to us.
Vice Mayor, this is Casey Toomey. I did want to point out that Tony Foster is here. He's the director of the ECC and also Sonia Baeza, who's the deputy director. I wanted to just say thank you for them, to them for being here and for all the work that they do for our community.
For sure.
Absolutely, I would echo that. All right. Back to us. Any discussion?
I'll just, you know, thank Wichita State and the entire team, and Misty, obviously, and the entire team that worked on it. I think much like the fire medical, I know it's a difficult process to get to, but I think it's a fair process, and it seems to build the consensus we're looking at for the community as a whole. And, you know, even more so than fire medical, this affects the whole county and all our communities. So appreciate the work and bringing everyone together and all you do on that. And so I certainly support the findings and the work that's been done.
Thank you. It's a great group to work with. We appreciate the opportunity to work with all of them and the different agencies.
Commissioner Sellers?
Just real quick. Again, I have no qualms with the financial model. I know that this is, our action is in regards to the financial piece, but since there was a portion that discussed the governance, I did appreciate the three-year look back to make sure that we are keeping in a timely fashion to review any financial models, but also the governance piece. And I know, I hope that the team does take a look at that and build that into work along with this, so that having that three-year look back has some value to it, and that there's some intentionality around building out that governance structure. So while we're here to discuss the financial piece, I think there's something to be said about the governance piece and ensuring that we put something in play, in a place, so that when we do this, when that team does their look back in three years, they can speak to that governance piece as well, and that they're moving, hopefully they can move with some objectives along with the other recommendations that were shared. So thank you for that, Misty.
Sure.
All right. Thank you for everyone on this. I really appreciate it. Love that it's going towards, you know, this collaboration of both city and county, individual cities within the county as well, working towards these goals. So just a continuation of our fire and medical conversation. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the financing model for the Emergency Communications Center and to authorize staff to prepare the appropriate agreements.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Looks like there are no nays, and so it passes unanimously. Thank you, guys, for all of your work on this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. That brings us to item G, mission items.
I do have one commission item. And I talked to Jeff about this. I've been talking to tenants to homeowners who have purchased a couple lots, RF7 lots, with the belief that they could do the double density. But there are some provisions related to non-conformity that prevents them from actually building those, building those double-density lots. And so I would like to see if we, if the commission would agree to initiate a text amendment to have staff look at that and bring it back. And Jeff, I don't know if you have any comments. I probably did an artful job of explaining that, but if you have any comments.
Commissioner Jeff Craig, I thought it was very well done. And there's some provisions in there that do, that were there, that have caused a little bit of consternation at this point. And just for the commission to know, it is work that we can't accommodate. We'll do some shifting of other projects to fit that in advance to commission's will tonight.
And usually, I would say as the guy doing the development code, I don't really want, on one hand, I don't want to push some things ahead of others. But these are lots, actually, they've already purchased. They have all the money to purchase the lots. They also have all the money to build the additional properties. And so waiting a year and a half to see what the answer is, or a year, might not. I mean, I'd rather get this looked at now, if we could, understanding it is putting some burden on the staff. But I think moving ahead on those affordable housing possibilities are important, especially when we have the money in hand to do it.
And it has to be spent by a certain time.
And there's some spending responsibilities there too, correct?
I think that component makes a lot of sense. And honestly, I was just, I'm just glad I was here for an artful explanation by Commissioner Frankel. It's almost like a sighting that they always come.
Thanks.
Any further commission items? All right. Moving us on. Item H, city managers' report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry. Craig, this is your show.
Thanks. We have four items before you on this part. Two is some substance that we can certainly, we've got staff prepared to go into more detail. But one of them was the follow-up on the report from the Prairie Park spraying incident and what we learned from it, and we've submitted that document to you and put it in the public eye so that we can report out on that. Derek Rogers and his team, they're involved in that investigation, are here to answer any questions, along with me, of course. And we can make a presentation if you'd like. The other item that has some substance is the pallet shelter update. And again, we have staff here that can answer any questions about that. And if you'd like, we can do a presentation, but we did try to be very thorough in these memos so that we could answer the questions that were there.
Okay. And Sheri, I don't know what to say, I'm a little tired. Sheri, there is public comment on the city managers' report, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Opening it up for, I'm sorry, first of all, any questions from the commission on any of these items?
Again, I guess I don't know which, if we're going to have public comment first or questions first. I, you know, I have questions on both of them, I guess. Probably if we're going to do that now or after public comment.
Well, let's just do, let's do public comment first. All right. All right, Sheri, opening it up for public comment.
Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Lori Greenfield. My pronouns are she/her. And I come before you as the Prairie Park Neighborhood Association Vice President. So while I appreciate the comments that were made here, we still have some questions, especially regarding the gift shop and the being able to become sustainable through financial means. It was acknowledged that there is no committee such or input there, and we would like to continue that work. We see that there's ways that we could become more financially stable with it. The other piece to this is, they mentioned in the report that there could be exhibit space instead of the gift shop. And I wonder, my question is, was Prairie Park Nature Center staff involved in that decision-making process? And what kinds of exhibits do they anticipate that there? If a gift shop is not available onsite, which I totally understand, the going to a cashless type of venue and the ramifications of handling cash, and the financial office wanting to get away from that, what other means could the nature center have such a shop? Maybe an online version or some other means to doing that? It is also mentioned in the report of giving back to those, the donations that were given to the nature center, and what mechanisms have they reached out to the nature center to be able to do that? So, you know, I appreciate the report, but I still think that we have some work to do, and the community is willing to do that and work with them. Thank you.
Back up again. My name is Ken Lastman, and I'm the person who submitted the responses to the report. And in a way, it's a little bit of a cart before the horse to make my comments before, if there's any presentation made by Parks and Rec. But, you know, I'm very pleased with the openness of the county or the city as far as Parks and Rec stepping up to make, to try and deal with the mistake that occurred and the damage that was done. And I guess I have made a series of additions to basically bolster the directions that were hinted at. I think that there is room for even more leadership in asking for, looking at the entire area of Parks and Rec. There's 4,300 acres of land, and, you know, including getting, Johnson County has a 184-page thing that I referenced in my statement, and I think it makes a great model. They're very progressive, it's very consistent with sustainability goals that the city has, and that, you know, they could work very well with that. I think the culture could be, a lot of education and training needs to happen within the Parks and Rec department itself that can be supporting the people that work there so that they become, they can tell the difference between native habitat and other habitats that they manage. And that's something that I think really needs to be emphasized. And I made a series of suggestions to their report, and I guess I'd like to see those incorporated as much as possible in the report. And I guess I'm here to answer or ask if you have any questions that I could address. If not, thanks. You know, if they come up later, I'd be happy to speak again.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on any of the city managers' report items?
Yes, hello, my name's Hank Guerisco, a longtime Lawrence resident, a biologist, freelance biologist. Naturally, I was very upset, like everyone else was, when the spraying happened. In my estimation, there were two major errors that happened. First of all, the prairie was sprayed naturally, as we know, and that was unfortunate or more than that. But also, there were no signs posted, okay? And this is a major issue, because someone else spoke at some sort of other meeting about the parks. about the Parks Management Meeting. And he was saying that he went there with his eight-year-old daughter and there was no, you know, nothing, I don't know if he went there that day, but it's a, it's really a liability issue for the city if there's, if they're not consistently putting signs up to notify people when they're spraying. I mean, and the thing is, the fact that all this has happened has really shaken in my mind, at least my confidence and maybe other members of the public as well, that things are not, I mean, is this being done? I mean, do they routinely do this? Is it haphazard? What is actually going on and how are they managing it and from, from what, what are they doing? I mean, in practice and in theory, both. So I think it's really important to really investigate this more thoroughly to make sure that all the natural areas are being managed the way they should. And like you said, Ken was saying about education, there's always a good component of that because people should know what they're looking at, you know, when they're managing stuff. So, you know, I'd like to see the confidence in the Parks Department restored. And I'd like to see that happen by further investigation and work with that, you know, on a community level of some kind or something happening with that. So that's basically, so I don't think it's over. I mean, just say, well, we made a mistake and now we're going to correct it, we're going to do this and this. Well, I think it's more than that. I mean, there's a systemic kind of, I don't know, a problem there that I, that I see. And the confidence has been shaken, like I said, so. Plus, the liability issue, I think, is a big one. I mean, if they don't post it and people get sprayed with stuff, I mean, that's really liability, you know? So anyway, thank you.
When I read the report, the findings of what happened or, you know, what was overlooked or why, I, I get the feeling that there's, there's a sense of, I mean, you know, Parks and Recreation employees have very graciously apologized and said that they made a mistake. But I really wonder how far they're going to go to make, to correct that. And I don't mean just learning how to spray things differently. I find it very troubling when in, all through the report, there are lots of excuses. Oh, we have a lot of staff turnover. Or, you know, we have some 1,500 acres of grassland that we deal with and we have a hard time making, you know, telling the difference. Or we were treating for Sarica lispidaeza and, you know, we didn't realize we were killing other things too. I mean, I don't, I don't buy that. Those excuses tell me that they're not really trying to learn from what they call a mistake. I don't think of it as a mistake if it's something that indicates an overall lack of understanding between those 15, those 1,492 acres and the six acres of prairie. I mean, 1,492 acres of turf grass and they think that's the same as prairie or prairie's the same as that. I mean, that's what, that's what strikes me. If you read the report comments from Ken Lastman, I think, I think he makes very significant points there that really should be followed, mostly of which is that Parks and Rec needs to first of all, learn and they need to know how to do training. And to do both of that, they need a management plan for natural areas, not a management plan for turf grass. If your only tool is a lawnmower, every weed, every problem looks like a weed. And so you just mow it all or you spray it all. They need a management plan that really goes into details and they need somebody on staff that understands that. How to get to that point, I don't know, but that's what needs to happen as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Ted Holcomb, just to make a quick comment. This is an opportunity. This is a great opportunity for this city to review and look again at what does it mean to be a park recreation department? What are parks? Are they just for people? Or they include the whole system of our kin that are not human? I mean, it is an opportunity and I hope somehow or another we bring in people, Ken and others, who can explore and maybe we can develop another model. Might retain the same people in many different ways, et cetera, but it is an opportunity. And I hope in some way we have people coming together around a table to talk about that possibility. Thank you.
What's all the public comment?
Okay. I'll go ahead and take it back to the commission for questions.
I guess I'd like Derek to respond both to the kind of the gift shop exhibit space question as well as Ken's statement, as well as some of the others.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm appreciative of the opportunity to speak tonight. I am appreciative of the people that came and spoke tonight with their questions. It's a very extensive memo. There's a lot of information in there. And so I'm going to condense some of it. We've been working with a lot of the community partners and I think there's a synergy and collaboration coming out of this. And part of that is our integrated pest management plan, to Michael Allman's point, doesn't address prairies and grasslands. And so that needs to be expanded and it needs to be revised, reviewed. To the individual that, has also been noted, I think Hank noted it again about the signage. That disturbs me too. I would not want to be walking out there after somebody sprayed in my yard and I didn't know about it or in our parks. So that has been addressed. There is a huge need for training, education, coaching that others talked about. Right now, we have mandatory annual training going on. Right now, there's a moratorium on spraying unless it's approved by the director or the Assistant Director of Parks. I do also have Mark Hecker on line for questions tonight. I'm going to talk, Michael mentioned the, the 1,500 acres of grasslands and nature areas and prairie that we do manage. In the memo, it wasn't our intent to say that, well, we got so much of it and we made a mistake because we couldn't differentiate. I think of the nature area where we took, I think it was about 10 acres, we worked with Evergy and we worked with the Native Prairie Restoration Group, Courtney Masterson. We did a phenomenal job up there. And I would suggest that you get a chance to go out to that area and look around at how well that prairie is. So we do have folks that manage that. There's a lot in that findings and a lot in the memo that was presented. We have over 4,000 acres of, of land, parkland, woodlands, grasslands in our city, which I think's about double of an average community about our size, which is fantastic. And with over 1,500 acres of that, that is restored, preserved, grassland and prairie areas to include pollinator habitats. So we remain committed to proactively rectifying the problem and we'll do everything it takes to make long-term improvements in the future to prevent events like this from happening again. And part of that is with re-engaging on the management plan, which hadn't been updated, I think, since 2007. It was a city plan. If you look at the requirements to spray and sign postage, we complied with the state regulations, but our city plans, which should be at a higher level, and we say this is important to the community. We engaged with the community on use of pesticides and how we do that, and it wasn't followed and that was a problem. So that's being addressed. But it also, in that IPM, doesn't address how we manage remnant prairie, prairie and grasslands that need to be expanded. The Johnson County Parks and Recreation has some experts out there. Matt Garrett is one of them. And we have been in contact with them. I think Ken Lastman mentioned him tonight. I do think there's a great synergy with the group we're working with right now on addressing how do we try to repair, rectify and move to a better place from this incident of spraying? We're working with the Kansas Biological Survey, the Call Valley Almanac, the Natural Lands Restoration Case State Extension, Cereber with KBS, Sharon Ashworth with Case State Extension Office. We are working with Ken Lastman and Courtney Masterson and others. So we have a really great team and we are meeting. And I think there's a collaboration, there's good coming out of this, we need to keep that going. It's going to take time. We're also working on with how we move forward in the short term and the long term to do this. And one of the things that we've been talking in this group is what can we do to protect the remnant prairie at Prairie Park now? And what we can do and is still in discussion is we can remove some of the invasive species around, surrounding the natural prairie to prevent some of the encroachment that's been going on for probably over 20 years, the honeysuckle and that. And so that takes some volunteer efforts, some employee efforts and some of our partners that are going to help lead some of this initiatives this summer. It's going to take us a little time to get this addressed. And so it's not a short-term, just snap your fingers, it's fixed. But it is a, an opportunity for us to come together as community and move forward in a positive way. Regarding the, the Nature Center, a lot of that goes back to, we did an internal review of our Parks and Rec administrative cash handling policy. And we found some discrepancies that needed to be addressed. And with follow-up with our City's Finance Department, the recommendation was to suspend cash payments and cash, the cash donations box at Prairie Park Nature Center. What we have done, we'll continue to work with staff on how we improve processes, training, improve efficiencies and for the near term, without, we don't know when, but we suspended the cash payment option there. But we do have, you can pay online, we accept checks or cash at the Prairie Park Nature Center at our administrative office. And we also can take cash at our administrative office. So we have an online donation capability now, that is online through a website. As part of that, we also looked at the gift shop and efficiencies. Some of that dealt with staff time and handling cash and run some back and forth to the banks and safes and everything else. And it was decided that it was more practical to look at that space for future exhibits or other potential uses. And do we have that resolved right now? I don't think we do. I don't know if Annette Deggans is online, she'd like to comment on that. Let me get through a few more things and we'll have Annette and Mark pick up what I missed. The community engagement, we did do a community engagement in September of last year. And a thank you email was sent out to all the people that participated. Feedback was tabulated and collected. And then at the December and January Parks and Rec Advisory Board meetings, we did provide updates. At that time, we hadn't moved forward with exploring further engagements with the public. With that, I'll ask Annette to catch us up on the, anything I might have missed on the Prairie Park Nature Center.
Yeah, Annette Deggans, Recreation Operations Manager. The only other additional things I would add is that we're working real close right now with the Nature Center staff and brainstorming a lot of new program ideas that we're trying to hope to get implemented. You know, some of those are like additional canoeing and fishing and archery classes, some off-site bird watching and offering, you know, maybe some off-site even canoeing trips kind of options. So with that staff time that was really being spent a lot with the, with the gift shop and some other things, they're just really looking at all kinds of options, including that space. You know, we were pretty cramped for space already. So just opening that up is, you know, kind of nice, especially when you have 80 kids there on a field trip. It's kind of nice to have a little bit additional space for them to be able to move around. We have camps out there right now and a lot of times, you know, before, when we'd have those programs going on, the space was already pretty limited. So we're looking into all kinds of options. I know recently, Ken and I talked about even doing some additional educational prairie classes out on the prairies. So those are some of the things that we're working on currently.
And thanks, Annette. Mark, do you have comments?
Yeah, Mark Hecker, Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. I'm really kind of excited. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday with all of our kind of regional experts. And we're going to sit down and just talk about how we've managed in the past, what we could change in the future. And I really want to pick the brains of regional experts on, you know, here's the problems I'm seeing in the prairie that we're having a lot of woody infestation coming in on the edges. How do we best address that? I'd like to pick their brains on best management practices there. And in fact, the Kansas Biological Survey's been already out there working. They did a full species inventory, sent me that just this afternoon. So they're showing almost 200 species currently in the prairie and they're comparing that to a species list they had from 2001. So I haven't gotten the full details on that, but that's kind of encouraging that they've, they had what history showed and then what's showing now today. And they've, they've done that work just in the last week or two. So that's kind of exciting to me that we, we get a little bit of a scientific look at that prairie. And they're, they've really done some amazing work in a very short period of time. Courtney Masterson and her staff put together a proposal for me on, on things that they would recommend for management practices over the next, you know, six to eight months. So if, once we get everybody in the same room, I think we can all get together pretty quickly on, on here's where we are now and here's where we want to move forward and here's step one, two, three, four, five. And here's some cost factors that may have to be factored in there. But, but all in all, I'm, I'm very excited, staff's excited to meet with the experts and just kind of pick each other's brains. So I feel pretty positive about it. I mean, kind of, I guess, making something good out of something bad.
And with that, Commissioners will close and open for questions.
I guess I'd just say thank, I mean, thanks for those, answering those questions. And I do think, you know, as, as Ted said, I think it's an opportunity. I think what you were saying and Mark was saying, you're taking it as an opportunity. And so appreciate that and appreciate seeing what, what results, you know, the classic lemonade out of lemons here.
Derek, one little piece of maybe accountability I want to follow up on here. If I understand correctly, you, the Parks and Rec Department is moving towards some kind of accreditation, is that correct?
Yes, we're working towards accreditation. And so that process, we should, our goal is to be on track for a site visit in the spring of '24. And then we would go to accreditation if that goes well in the fall of '24.
And does that accreditation require that you review all of your policies?
It requires a review. There's certain standards on what policies are required. And so not only, Parks and Rec has a cemetery division or something like that. So it requires a review. And that's one of the things that I'm very adamant on right now is taking an inventory of all our policies and starting a review of our policies. I think we've got a meeting scheduled for this month to do that. What do we have? What are we missing? What should we have? What needs to be revised? There's a lot of work that goes into accreditation and it's additional duties and time. And we're going to make time to review our policies.
Good, thank you.
Derek, I just had an additional question. First of all, you know, I'd like to add to what I said.
Derek, I just had an additional question. First of all, you know, I'd like to echo what I said, you know, it says, it really is an opportunity to go ahead and, you know, move it, move it forward. I know that this is just the beginning, as you said, there's, you know, the immediate actions that you are pursuing right now, the long-term goals of making it, you know, have more effective, efficient, and sound policies regarding our prairies and grasses. One aspect I wanted to kind of follow up a little bit was, I know you say, December and January, Parks and Rec Advisory Board had revisited the conversations that were had with the Prairie Park Group, not sure if it was the Neighborhood Association or just folks interested in the Nature Center itself. I was just wondering, when was the time for any sort of follow-up in terms of getting back with them and hopefully, you know, working towards a plan for, you know, some sort of sustainability?
Derek, Register Director of Parks Recreation, that was provided, an update was provided at the Parks and Rec Advisory Boards in December and January, and all passed to Annette, who might be able to provide a little more information on your question.
Yeah, after the fall meeting, we followed up with everyone that came and participated. And then, the advisory board meeting, it was primarily people that were interested in the Prairie Park Nature Center. We're still kind of talking about the next step from here. We don't really have a clear set plan moving forward, but our intentions are that we'll work with all interested parties that have come forth.
Okay. That's good to hear. I just want to make sure that we're expressing to the interested parties that we're still in that deliberation mode, just so that you're not left in the dark, so. Any further questions?
Not on that. I had questions about the Pallet Village, if we want to switch.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
I appreciated Craig, Danny, Brandon, whoever, I know Danny wrote, I mean, I certainly understand the technical issues that are causing, you know, we need to get this right with the demolition, the site fencing, the site analysis, all that. I guess my two big questions in around, one, the operations contract, I think the RFP, I think, closed today, so I'd be interested in an update on that. And then, an update on what, if any, outside the Pallet Village, both the camp and other processes, how do you see this changing as we look at those processes going forward? Now that we have a longer delay before the Pallet Village is open, is that changing anything we have been doing or will be doing?
Good evening, everyone. This is Danny Walters with Planning and Development Services. To answer your first question, yes, the RFP closed today. We did not receive any qualified bids for the operations. So, staff is regrouping likely tomorrow or Thursday, and we're going to figure out what our next steps are and how to move forward with that. To answer your question about the continuation of the support site, we have been working with some hot weather response type items at the support site. We're providing water, we're providing a misting area. We have just put up a large community tent for the residents there to provide some shade and then also give a place for people to meet up with family and meet up with case managers and that type of thing. We are continuing with the 24/7 staffing out there, and, I mean, as long as, as long as it's appropriate, we are, we are working towards maintaining that support site until we can get the Pallet Village open.
Thank you. Disappointing that we did not get any applications, I know that's.
I could not agree with you more.
Yeah.
Any, this is Commissioner Sellers. As far as I was looking in the memo, we talked about having conversations with individuals at support site and those with lived experience. I know one of the concerns that was brought up is that we're not, what does regular communication and engagement with those at the support site look like as far as accountability and just being aware of problematic behaviors of individuals? So, are we, has there been an effort to restructure what regular communication among individuals at the support site between each other and with staff? Has that been reestablished, adjusted? What have we been doing with that?
Danny Walters with Planning and Development Services. That would be something that I would probably be more comfortable having Cicely comment on, and she's not on the meeting this evening. I can say that we did just start having camp meetings. They had a camp meeting yesterday morning, and I believe got a lot of really good input from the residents about some of the things that are going on, some of the concerns that folks had. So, I think that that's a really good step to starting that open communication between the guests at the site and staff to get those voices heard and take that input in from them.
This is Brandon. I might just add to that. I know also that our friends with artists helping the homeless have been engaged quite a bit and quite frequently at the site. You know, they provide peer support specialists and then, in working directly with the community members at the support site. And so, I think that really does, or has helped with communication, how information is exchanged and processed, and ultimately, the response to that. I think also, we've been pretty successful in working with Burt Nash Homeless Outreach Team in getting case management more directly involved and more consistently involved. We are, through Burt Nash, working to get VI SPDA's filled out and completed for each of our residents. So, as you probably know, that is a key step to accessing services and, you know, making progress on their recovery. So, I think there's a lot of positive momentum at the support site right now, and I know Cicely Thornton has been very dedicated, spending quite a bit of time just trying to get the level of service there to the place that we really want it.
I would second what Brandon said. She's done an outstanding job at that location.
I will take a point of personal privilege to say, I know, it seems like weeks ago, but it's been a couple of weeks since, you know, those of us that participated in the summit and wish we had a little bit more time to, you know, strategically digest and kind of decompress from it and share. There was definitely a lot of synergy that came from the space and conversing with partners across the state with the different continuums of care around just, not just practices but strategies, but also, you know, just how do we make those in Topeka aware that the work that we're trying to do, there's only so much capacity that we could do locally and that we really need their help on the state level to give us some relief? And so, you know, I know what we're trying to do with the timeline, it was not most ideal. But, I hope that this gives us an opportunity to tighten up on some, just some relationship building that we've been doing, that we've been seeing, and that will continue to make this, you know, as we transition and go through each step of this project, that it will, you know, help along with the engagement and education and understanding piece of all of this stuff. You know, I truly believe that things happen for a purpose, and so, while this may be a delay, it's not a defeat. So, I'm hoping that we can continue to build on that and those who participated in the summit, that we continue to pull some of those practices that we heard and we discussed and we continue to build them here locally to help us address this. There's still some pieces that are out of our hand, but at least for us to be more aware so that we can be stronger advocates for speaking that on the state level, which is what we're going to need to do. You know, this is work that we're feeling and need, but, you know, that was something that we discussed there, and I think it's germane to what we're talking about and how we're going to continue to build on what we need to do to be successful in this project. So, I just wanted to, I'm glad to hear with the work that Cicely's doing and helping to reestablish and open up those lines of communication, because I know that that was something, hearing from advocates as well as individuals there was sorely missed, and it's something I felt that it was low-hanging fruit that we could adjust, that we could address. So, thank you for that.
And I just had a comment regarding, just in terms of Pallet Village and neighborhood associations and surrounding neighbors and whatnot. I know I saw in this memo that, you know, information is willing to be dispersed as it comes a little bit, but I would encourage us to go ahead and almost not necessarily over-communicate, but make concerted efforts to go ahead and keep them in the loop whenever possible, just to make sure that we're maintaining those relationships and building the bond that was to go ahead and make this project as successful as it can be. So, I just wanted to go ahead and add that bit.
All right. Any further questions from the Commission?
I guess one thing, it's technically, maybe I should have said this, the Commission Items, the SB 180, did we make that clear earlier that we wanted that to be looked at? I mean, you said we bring it up at Commission Items, we normally bring it up at Commission Items.
Yeah.
I want to make sure staff, Courtney, I don't know what you were asking, but I wanted to be sure we were on the same page.
Tony.
Did you get what you needed from us?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I just want to be sure, just want to be sure we knew that was, we were asking you to look at that and bring us something.
We've been, we have been studying it for the last couple of weeks and engaged with other cities and as well as the league on those options. And Dr. Mohammed and Tony Wheeler have been already engaged in some of that work. And then, that'll move us towards looking at whatever legislation we might have, but we probably want to check within, check back in with you before that would come forward.
Just because we did it differently, I just wanted to be sure we were.
Sure, thank you.
Proceedually got to the right point, though.
And procedurally, that was something you all approved us looking into a few weeks back. It was brought up under Commission Items, so we were already doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Okay. All right, just moving us on, Commission Calendar. Anything, any questions and comments?
I guess I'd just point out that we don't have a meeting next week. A few public commenters said they'd be back next week. I just wanted to be sure, it got out there that there was not a meeting next week.
And July 4th is canceled as well.
And July 4th is canceled, yeah.
Yeah, you guys can have a meeting, I'm just not going to be here.
Okay.
All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I can't.
First and the second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.